This is the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public, but not is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for the discussion. Let's go ahead and start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's go ahead and do roll call. Courtney, are you available? Dana Cockens? Dana Cockens? I don't know if she can hear me yet. I'll go on. Jessica Jernigan?
Yeah.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Tim Oderkirk?
Here.
William Pengele?
Here.
Courtney Stegman here. Amy Bond?
Here.
Dana Cockens? Dana, are you there? I don't know if she's able to. I don't know either. Yeah. Okay. Is that okay, Deb? Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, next is the approval of the agenda. Did anyone have anything that they wanted to change with that? Okay, not seeing anything. We're gonna go ahead and do the Student Board of Education Representative. Lauren, I believe she was on?
Yep, I'm here. All right, so first, I wanted to take a second to thank the community for the incredible support for our fundraiser for Fund Days Project. So we will be able to have a senior farewell tour, senior graduation science, and host the Anorak Ice Cream Social, which is very exciting. Student Senate is placing all participating businesses on the back of our Senate shirts and as a thank you for supporting us. We have applications available for students who want to run for MPHS Senate for next year. Applications have been emailed to every high schooler and some are available in Bush's Room, and they are due at the end of this month. That is a great way to get involved at the school. So we are working also with the middle school to assist with their incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth grade elections. We also are exploring how to have an eighth grade exchange. It may be virtual this year, not sure yet. We are continuing to explore possible spring activities, such as having a homecoming in the spring. We are like asking questions like, can we have a reverse parade? Mock Rock videos? Do students want to participate in a cornhole tournament? Ooh, a movie or a movie on the football field, which would be fun. Um, and we have asked and have been granted permission to start a new yearly tradition of having a picture professionally taken of our student or senior scholars and having it hung in the school permanently. We would continue doing this and funding it each year. And we also are having a fundraiser scheduled at MP Nutrition on Saturday, March twentieth, from ten to four. All right, I wanna do a little plug too. So Mount Pleasant High School is putting on the once-in-a-lifetime spectacular radio show Extravaganza. Our theater department is putting that on, and that is this Friday and Saturday at seven thirty and this Sunday at two thirty PM. That was both for PM. And tickets are sold online and have to be bought ahead of time. And then you can also view it online. I think that there's a link. It's nphsmusical dot, oh gosh, L U D U S dot com. So if you wanna check that out, it's a lot of fun. I'm in it, a bunch of other high schools are in it, and it should be a lot of fun. So that is all.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Lauren? Thanks, Lauren. It sounds like you guys have a lot of really cool things planned out. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next is the requested financial report.
Good evening. I have for you the requested financial reports for the general fund and the special service funds for revenue and expenditures comparing the month of January two thousand and twenty to the month of January two thousand and twenty-one. For general fund, revenue is at thirty-eight percent of budget this year compared to thirty-nine percent last year, and our expenditures are at forty-six percent of budget this year compared to forty-six percent last year. For our special service funds, athletics, revenue was at zero percent this year compared to eleven percent last year, and expenditures are at negative eight percent this year compared to nine percent last year. And again, if you remember from last month, that was a refund from a double payment that was made the prior year. So we will, since this is a self-sustaining fund, we'll make that even with the hockey program at the end of the year. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue was at sixty-six percent of budget this year compared to sixty-eight percent last year, and expenditures are at forty-eight percent of budget this year compared to fifty-two percent last year. For the nurse testing program, revenues are at zero percent both years and expenditures are at one percent this year compared to three percent last year. Again, that program will no longer have any revenue coming into it. There's just a small fund balance that we're working on spending down in that program. Food service revenue is at twenty-five percent of budget this year compared to forty-four percent last year, and expenditures are at thirty-six percent of budget this year compared to forty-two percent last year. That's a timing in when we receive our revenue from the state. We did take a very close look at this just last month, and so far, the food service fund is very even. Revenues and expenditures are pretty much almost exactly equal. So right now, that program is looking neutral for the year, which is good considering the year that we're having and the year that we just came off of. For the school store, revenues are at twenty-three percent this year compared to eighty-one percent last year, and expenditures are at twenty-three percent this year compared to seventy percent last year. Moving on to the treasures report for general fund, on December thirty-first, we had a cash balance of two point three million dollars. In the month of January, we had receipts in the amount of five point three million dollars, and that brings us dispersments, or I'm sorry, and we also had dispersments in the month of January of four point three million. So that brings us a cash balance of January thirty-first of three point three million dollars. For the retirement fund, on December thirty-first, we had a cash balance of nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We had revenue in the month of January come in and one, one point five million dollars and just a small amount of dispersments, thirty-three dollars for some deposit slips for our new two thousand and twenty bond fund that we have. That brings us a balance on January thirty-first of two point four million dollars. And last but not least, for the Capital Projects Fund, on December thirty-first, we have a balance of two point eight million dollars at the bank. Small amount of interest income, a hundred and six dollars, and no dispersments for the month of January. So the balance on January thirty-first is two point eight million dollars. And that's all I have for you this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Ginger, I have a question. When do we have to have the bond funds spent down that are the two point eight or two point six million? Is there a timeline?
There is. Typically, eighty-five percent of the total proceeds need to be spent within the first five years. We received just under four million dollars in two thousand and twenty when we sold series two, so we still have it through two thousand and twenty-five to spend eighty-five percent of that. So we're well within within reach of that goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have received some correspondence. And for the purpose of this meeting, we have received correspondence from Heidi Wood, Daniel Weber, Shannon DeLong, and Lisa Wiley. And the board has committed to reading those correspondence before the start of the meeting today. So next with that, we have the consent agenda. Current consent items are the approval of the February first regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second, reading.
Courtney? Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pengele?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman? Yes. Amy Bond? Yes. That unanimously passes. Next is the financial approval of bills to the sum of eight hundred, nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Is there a motion to pass that?
So moved. Second.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pengele?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman? Yes. Amy Bond? Yes. That passes unanimously. All right, next is new business.
Good evening. Our first item under new business is a new hire, so I'll turn that over to Linda.
Good evening, everyone. We are, last time I think that we were together, we celebrated Kimmel Boyle's many years at Mount Pleasant Public Schools and her recent retirement, and we were very fortunate to interview candidates last week and have hired Michaela Crowell for the PE health position. We're very excited to welcome Michaela back to Mount Pleasant. She is a two thousand and twelve Euler graduate. She went on to CMU and was a track and field athlete there and also ran cross-country, but also while she was there, she was in the leadership program, and she just has a fabulous resume and great experiences since her graduation from from Central Michigan, Michigan University. So we're excited to bring her back, and we would like the board to ratify her new hire as a new hire.
So moved.
Second. Courtney? Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pengele?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman? Yes. Amy Bond? Yes. That unanimously passes and welcome. Next is donations.
Yeah, we have three really exciting donations this evening that I wanna talk about, and I guess I'll let you all decide if you wanna accept them all at once or individually, but they are all just an excellent reflection of the amazing community that we live in. So first, we have a donation from Exxon, the Exxon Mobile Education Alliance, which is J and H Oil Company, and they have donated five hundred dollars to Mount Pleasant High School to support math and science programs. We were contacted by the store manager from the local J and H Oil Company store who brought the check over for us. She was very excited to be able to donate that to us. Our second donation is from Lock Key USA, and that donation is in the value of seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. That donation is used to pay off negative student lunch balances, and the donation was so huge that it impacted over two hundred and sixty students. So we're really just incredibly grateful for this very generous donation. Again, the president of Lock Key reached out to the district and wanted to see how he could help and the number of students that he could, he could help. The third donation that we have for you this evening is from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Education Foundation, and we are thrilled of this donation. The Education Foundation took it upon themselves after reading our teachers' grants this fall and went out and raised twenty-two thousand dollars to support the purchase of calculators for the Mount Pleasant High School math department. There is a little bit of a larger need. They still need about twelve thousand dollars to get to the full request, but this is such an amazing donation. They went ahead and collaborated with the bookstore at CMU, purchased the calculators, and delivered them to Mount Pleasant High School Math Department on Friday, February fifth. So we're incredibly grateful for their generosity, for the generosity of the donors in our community that supported the foundation and then in turn supported Mount Pleasant High School. So those are the three donations that we have for you this evening, and I think you can probably accept them all at once or individually, whatever you prefer to do.
I move that we accept the donations from J and H Oil Company, ExxonMobil Corp., to the high school, Lock Key USA, and the Mount Pleasant Education Foundation calculators.
Second.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pengele?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman? Yes. Amy Bond? Yeah. Unanimously passes, and thank you so much. Those are very, very generous donations, and I'm sure many, many students will be positively impacted by that.
Amazing.
Next is the Mount Pleasant Support Personnel Association ratification letter of agreement.
Yep. So in your back of this evening, you have information regarding the contract ratification with the Mount Pleasant Support Personnel Association. This is slightly different than the other letters of agreement that we approved at our last board meeting. If you remember back in June, we extended the support staff contract for six months just through December thirty-first, and then again in December, we extended it through March first. So this is the actual ratification of the entire master agreement for the Support Staff Association. And what I've done in my memo is highlight the areas that we've negotiated that would be any changes in the master agreement. First and foremost, you voted back in June that the whole monitor group would be accreted into this organization. We established their pay scale for them at that time, but we hadn't spent the time to negotiate on the benefit package offered, the official job description, and those kinds of things. So that work was completed by our bargaining teams. Again, like we saw with our other groups that we approved last week, both parties have agreed to a one point five percent increase in the wage schedule. This is the same as what we ratified for the teachers, the administrators, and the Transportation Association at our last board meeting. One of the other things that we did with the wage schedule is we worked to simplify that a little bit because this group again is a little bit different where they have a wide variety of different kinds of employees in their group. We tried to make the wage scale as simple as possible. So we went from ten to twelve different categories down to four to five groups. So we combined those groups together to make that a little bit, a little bit more simple, not only for the district but also for new employees. It's also very, it's, it can be very confusing for them to determine where they lie when they first get hired. We agreed to increase coverage, what we provide for them for insurance. So we're now agreeing to provide eighty percent of the single subscriber hard cap for full-time MPSPA members. We also have agreed to a chart of days. Again, with so many different kinds of employees, they have a variety of different days where some employee groups work only student days, other employee groups work student days plus one or plus two. Some groups work teacher days. So Linda created a very nice chart that's easy for everyone to follow, so we're very clear on what days each group or each employee group has. And then finally, we agreed to an extension of the master agreement through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. So prior to this, we've just done some really short extensions, but I think we all agree that, you know, we can extend this contract for a couple of years. As is standard with all of our master agreements, this does include a wage opener every year, and the language for the wage opener is that we would begin bargaining wages in the fall of the year after we receive the audit information back. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Both Linda and Ginger are also a part of the bargaining team for the Support Staff Association along with Kelly Mary Hugh and Tammy Carrier. So that's our team for this group. But we're asking you this evening that you ratify the tentative agreements for their master agreement for the Support Personnel Association.
So moved.
Second. And good job, you guys. That was a lot of work.
Thank you. It is, it is a lot of work when you type it up on one sheet. It doesn't always reflect the number of hours that we spent, but it was a really good collaborative process, so we're happy to be a part of it.
Dana Cockens? Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
William Pengele?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman? Yes. Amy Bond? Yes. That unanimously passes.
Amy, you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. So we are moving on next to the Extended COVID-nineteen Learning Plan.
So I will get us started this evening, and then as you can see from our screen, we have a wide variety of administrators that will be joining me and participating in their part. Let me just get to where I need to be here quickly. If it's okay with, with the board, what we will do is we'll go through our entire presentation, and then we will give you the opportunity to ask questions of any member of the administrative team. We have several that are here this evening as panelists, and I believe that the rest of the administrative team is on as participants. So if there's a particular question that you have, we'd be happy to have a participant unmute and answer that as well. I do wanna say that I feel like there's been a lot of buildup for this meeting. Certainly, a lot of comments, a lot of emails have been exchanged, comments on social media. And I just ask if we really sit back and listen to what our presenters have to say this evening. In my heart of hearts, I believe that our district has done an amazing job of doing what's best for our students given a very, very challenging situation. So it has absolutely not been perfect, but we're getting better all the time. I've got some hopeful news that I wanna report this evening, and our administrators and teachers have spent a lot of time thinking about and preparing for the third trimester. I think that's what makes this meeting a little bit more, I don't know, a little bit more important maybe than our other meetings when we've looked at our Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. Ultimately, at the end of this, we will ask that the board offers some type of approval for our plan. If you remember the timeline, we're doing this now so that we can be prepared for our third trimester, which starts on March ninth. So I just hope that we can go into this with open minds, listen to what our presenters have to share with you all this evening, ask thoughtful questions, and move forward in a kind and professional manner. That's my hope for us this evening. First of all, I do wanna share some exciting news. I really believe that there's a lot of hope in the air. I've talked a lot about hope all around us lately, but I can officially report that as of today, just over two hundred and ten Mount Pleasant Public School staff members have received both doses of the vaccine. In total, over two hundred and sixty staff members received the first dose. So I know that in the next couple of weeks, those fifty or so staff members that we have out there still lingering will have the opportunity to get the second dose. In my mind, that's a game changer for us. To give you an overall perspective though, every two weeks, we pay right around four hundred and fifty people. So if we look at the two hundred and sixty number, that's about fifty-eight percent of our employees that have received the vaccine. I had hoped that that number would be higher, and we will continue to offer those opportunities. But I really feel like we've done an excellent job with getting vaccines to our teachers, to our staff members that wanted to get the vaccine. I think it's also important to note that this number does not include those employees that we have contracted with the district. So it does not include, excuse me, our employees from Grand Rapids Building Services, from SFE, from PCMI, which would be our substitute teachers, from our PEAK program. So all of those programs that we are contracted with and collaborate with, although they're not included in this two hundred and ten people, they have all also had the opportunity to get the vaccine. So our number of our students that are adults that are working with students every day that have had the vaccine is actually much higher than what these numbers reflect. To give you an example, I met with the PEAK program coordinators last week, and they shared with me that every single one of their staff members except for one got the vaccine. So those numbers should also be included in, in our accounts. I just don't have access to them because they're not our employees. So I think that's very exciting. I think our countywide collaboration is also very exciting, not only with the vaccine, but with the information and guidance that we're receiving, especially from the Central Michigan District Health Department. I can't say enough about how much we value their work and how supportive they really are to us. Their guidance and their advice to us is to keep students in school as long as possible, and we've really taken that advice to heart. We believe that we have a common goal of keeping students safe. And Dr. Morris will tell you that we're very fortunate that we've had very little outbreaks in schools. Students and adults are not getting sick in school. More often than not, if they are sick, they are bringing it into school. The third point that I wanna make that I think is really exciting is that as I watch our community and our country as a whole suffer from what I call COVID fatigue, suffer from the frustration of, we've been doing this for so long, enough's enough. I see in our buildings a strong commitment to our safety protocols. That's not wavered. You're gonna see that time and time again through this presentation this evening. We have a strong commitment to our safety protocols, and we have a strong commitment to the mental health and well-being of our students and our staff, and I'm proud of that. I think that's exciting. Our current COVID numbers, again, really exciting. So I've included the four points on this slide that show kind of a story of where I think we've been. So if you remember November sixteen, that was when we ultimately decided we would go virtual, and we were virtual for a period of about seven weeks. You can see where we were with active students and staff cases, but of course, the number that was most alarming to us was the number of staff in quarantine that made it challenging for us to maintain our regular operations. You go now to today's numbers where you look, we have no students that are active. We have fifteen students in quarantine. We have one active case, and we have one staff member in quarantine. That's a huge transition from where we were back in November. So I think it's really important to look at that. So some general information for you all regarding third trimester. Our third trimester begins on March ninth. It's a Tuesday and ends on June fourth, which is what's scheduled to be right now on the last day of school. As I mentioned earlier, all of our safety protocols are still very much in place, and it's still our top priority to keep our students and our staff safe while they're in school. Masks continue to be required at all times for all grade levels. We have additional custodial staff that are working to disinfect classrooms every four hours. They're doing the touch points, and teachers are, are working with students to disinfect classrooms after transition. Buildings are deep cleaned on a regular rotating base basis, and our bus protocols remain the same. We're able to offer extra support for at-risk and special education students. Again, we believe our students and staff are safe in schools, and it's been really nice to have the extra protocols and screening that is happening from our families before our students leave for school. They've been great partners in this. This is the meeting where we look at the reconfirmation information, and so I wanna take a few minutes to, to look at that, which really, this is focused on our two-way communication. So I always like to go back to why we're doing this. These are requirements of the Return to Learn legislation that was passed in August of two thousand and twenty. There are three parts, that we're looking at our educational goals, that we're looking at a progress report by February first, which we did last month, and then they were holding monthly reconfirmation meetings. So this is data that's pulled out of Power School for four weeks. Teachers have until Wednesday of the next week to log that information into the system, and I'm gonna show you how that has impacted our teachers. The report that we're looking at for this month is of a period of four weeks of instruction where our students had the option of either online or face-to-face. So let me first pull up the February reconfirmation report. So again, this is, this is what will be posted on our website, standard information. This is the Return to Learn Plan that we currently have after tonight's board meeting. When decisions are made, I'll go in and adjust that information. We'll document public comments, and then we'll look here at the rates of two-way interaction. So we're comparing all students, students that are one hundred percent remote and students that are not one hundred percent remote. So that means those students that are face-to-face. This period of time focuses on January eighteenth through last Friday, February twelfth. So if you, if you notice, and although this, the DK two is a different, is not a good example, this number here for the one hundred percent remote for the last week may be a little bit low because technically speaking, our teachers have until Wednesday of this week to put that information into the system. And I'll show you more about that in a minute. So we're looking again at our students broken down by our grade level configurations in the district, third grade through fifth grade, sixth through eighth, and then our high school, ninth through twelfth. In the last couple of board meetings, we've talked a lot about, boy, this In the last couple of board meetings, we've talked a lot about, boy, this number here looks low. I don't know if you can see my cursor, I'm circling the 58%. That number there looks low, and I want to show you an example. If we go back to, I don't know why I always lose us here. We go back to the the presentation. I just want to pull up, for example, this is January's report. So this is a report, it was a little bit different because it did include several weeks where we were a virtual program, right? So if you look, you'll see the not 100% remote for the first three weeks of this report is NA. We scroll back down to the high school area, looking at the week ending January 15, 100% remote, with 80.21%. When I showed this report to you at the board meeting on January 18, that was 36.12%. So when we're able to recheck numbers after the deadline that we've given to teachers, we see a significant increase because teachers just need the extra time to be able to record this in the system. So we'll continue to update that and continue to look. But this is how we know that we're having that meaningful two-way communication. Those criteria are set for us by the state of Michigan. It's not something that's willy-nilly. It's rigid and set, and that's how we count pupil attendance. Okay, now we're going to go into our individual return to school plan updates. So we'll start this evening with our elementary update. And joining us this evening from our elementary buildings, we have Kim Bishop, Principal of Vowels Elementary, and Katie Rinkie, Principal of Fancher Elementary. And they'll talk about the return to school plan for for our DK through five buildings.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you to the board for having us tonight. So both Katie and I will go through a few slides that discuss our K through fifth return to school plan. The first slide that we want to focus on focuses on where we're at right now in trimester three. What are the things that have been working for us for those first two trimesters and then moving into the next trimester? So first, we would be continuing the universal mask wearing in our buildings. So this is all K through fifth grade. Also, we have sanitation, including hand and bathroom hygiene. So that would be just continuing to recognize in the classrooms and throughout the building that need to repeat those protocols for hand and bathroom hygiene. Sorry, I wasn't sure if Katie was going to jump in. I'll go ahead and do, keep going. The next one is disinfecting touch points every four hours with additional custodial staff. I know Jennifer touched on this. GRBS has been doing an amazing job in our buildings. They continue to do that, so we'll continue to do that working into trimester three. Touch points would be such things as getting the locker handles, the main doors that we're using in and out of throughout the day, as well as getting into the classroom door handles and such. So they have been amazing. And when there's something that we feel like we we need, we know that we can count on them, and we just need to ask as well if there's something that we feel like maybe has had more of it in one day compared to others. We also have cohorts for small group instruction and lunch, so we're continuing to keep those groups small so that we can also social distance. Robust quarantine policies and contact tracing practices. We really have been relying not only just on our staff, and they have been doing amazing, but also our parents and families as well with contacting us and keeping in communication with us. That has helped so much these first two trimesters in being able to do what we need to do here and do a great job of doing our contact tracing as well. Continued focus on social distancing throughout the building. We also have some classrooms that are fully face-to-face. So most of our classrooms K through five are fully face-to-face. And then you'll see in parentheses, we have the exception of some kindergarten classrooms at Gannard and Poland. So moving into this trimester, so we, I don't know if if you remember back to back at our November meeting, but we made that change from that those blended classrooms to our face-to-face classrooms at that time. And so we continued that all through trimester two. And then we'll continue that moving through to the next trimester, and that has been successful for us. And I think that our teachers would would say the same thing about that as well. And then the continued work of five days instruction. We feel that being here in school five days out of the week is important, not only to the education and the learning piece of students, but also that health and emotional, socially emotional piece of where they're at. I don't know if Katie, if you want to touch on any of that.
You covered that pretty well. Okay, I can jump into updates, though, and then we can work backwards. So good evening, everybody. So we wanted to take a look and update you at our numbers across DK five buildings here, looking into try three. With the enrollment survey that went out and commitment into looking at try three, if you look at the far right-hand column, there's McGuire. So with survey feedback so far and what online Oilers would like to either continue with online learning or return to face-to-face, we, it's very similar between Fancher and McGuire. We have about 79 to 80% will be face-to-face learners, and then 20 to 21% will continue online learning. The shift for our students currently who are online, it's about 20 kids at Fancher and about 25 students at McGuire who would like to return to face-to-face learning for try three. That, as Jen said, starts March 9. So we broke down by each grade level. You can see third, fourth, fifth in each grade level and building, and then how many students would be online. So if you recall, those online numbers were quite large for our online teachers to teach and just maintain in the beginning of try one. So it's it's very manageable now with where our numbers are at, I believe. And then you can see below our class range across buildings and third through fifth. We're looking at about 20 to 26 students per class, and that varies as far as which building and how many sections. But there's a range there of what our families have committed to and shown interest in, so.
And then if you look, if you look at the Vowels, Poland, and Gannard numbers, we've, and you look at the percentages, we align pretty close and tight with Fancher and McGuire. So if you remember back in trimester one and two, we were more in that 30% range of being, having students online. So like that 70, 30% range. And now we've bumped up to between the 80 and 20%. So you can see our number of bodies in the lower elementary and the percentage that that equates to both as face-to-face and Oilers online. We generally, the most we had come back in one grade level was 13 students in one of the lower elementary buildings. And as far as an update from the last time that the board met and we focused on our plan, we have bulleted a few points from Dr. Morse that with continued focus on social distancing, they have recommended that we can maintain three feet of social distancing when possible. So that's per Dr. Morse from the community mental or with from the Health Department. And we do still continue to get on weekly meetings with her to get her updates. And if we can't jump on right away, we do get back and watch the recordings that she has for us. They have recommended that schools can be open, provided that they are strictly still implementing strategies of infectious infection control. Three feet of social distancing is recommended for young learners at these levels of community spread, meaning that even if there is the community spread is high, that research is saying that young learners can still be in school. So not only is that per Dr. Morse, but that's also included in the MDE update that we most recently received as well.
And then we also wanted to circle back to the discussion. I'm not sure what month it was or board meeting it was, but there was mention and talk, should we look at a day for our elementary teachers? And at the time, there was conversation, we could look at a potential date for November, December, January, and we met as an administrative team, and we tried to pencil in some dates there. Well, then, if you recall, we all went virtual. And so things very much shifted in at that time for us. So we were fully virtual from November 16 to January 11. And so we, that first week back from from winter break, we were virtual. And then that next week, we had a snow day and a delay. So it just, it did not seem feasible to add in a day off when we just got students back into the flow and transition of that face-to-face learning and collected all the technology. But we did want to bring this up in discussion, and we know we each building leader has had conversations with teachers and heard concerns and just heard their input there. And we didn't want our our staff and the board and the public to think this wasn't a conversation we had as a as a team. We try to look at all perspectives, student perspective, family perspective, teacher perspective. So we just, those were not feasible days that we had initially talked about penciling in. We didn't predict we would all be virtual at that time. Some things we put in place and just, you know, for everyone's knowledge and awareness too is typically we have our our teachers meet in PLCs weekly. We really, as an administrative team, said we need to pull back and and give them more planning time, that we're not taking one prep a week from their planning times. We've been pretty flexible with that, although PLCs are important for collaboration and looking at data. So we've asked that teachers meet at least two of the four weeks in their PLC. And then we've been flexible as far as staff meetings during the months of December and March, given virtual or given if it's a non-PD-scheduled staff meeting. We have been flexible building to building as what we hold for a staff meeting or have canceled or given more work time at. March 8 was already a scheduled day, which will be nice, I think, for teachers. It's the day after conferences, you know, they have a late Thursday night in conferences and then a full day. So that Monday was already scheduled off. And then, of course, end of March, it's crazy to think about, but spring break is right around the corner there, hopefully with some warmer weather for all of us. As far as our blended sections go, part of a way to support those teachers still teaching blended is they get additional two 30-minute blocks of support each day as a blended teacher. So that time could be used to record videos. It could be used to teach live sessions, small group, or document the two-way, which we looked at that data earlier. We we did discuss the challenge of a Wednesday a month would be for a few months on families. Not being a one-to-one district with technology would be quite hard. I know with Fancher, I think we sent out 200 Chromebooks, and that was quite a task to get those back after virtual learning with cleaning and sanitizing, you know, putting them back on carts, getting them reassigned. So it's not, devices aren't sent home each night with students or each week. So that is a challenge and a logistical part. There was some conversation, maybe from a few teachers too, that they thought, well, maybe packets instead of a virtual day. You know, a packet would also require more prep time on our teachers and something to prepare to send home for that if we did a Wednesday off a month. So those are just conversations we we had as a team and just moving forward. At this time, we don't, we believe it's best that we've have our students five days a week and and just kind of thinking ahead of how the schedule might might play out with that March 8. And who knows, maybe a snow day or two still left in winter. But we wanted to share that because we know that was important to our teachers and administrators to circle back to that conversation, so.
I think one thing to mention too, if it's okay, Jennifer, that we did not put in the slide, but a few, a couple other things that have come to mind that have really worked well, that should have probably been part of that first slide that we shared at the lower elementary, is the what our teachers have done, teachers and parents, to help with getting students in for testing during. And we just recently did NWE at the end of March, and so we're, I'm sorry, at the end of January. So we're looking at nearly 100 or more students that needed to take NWA benchmark assessments. And so the virtual teachers and other staff that supported that, as well as families, you know, thank you for helping to bring your students in that helped make things go smoother. And for those that we were not able to reach in that way, we were able to do online. And also, our virtual teachers have been amazing about putting together their materials that are needed for each trimester. And so, you know, we try to just limit it to just one time where we, you know, each try that we have parents come to get those materials rather than giving, you know, the students everything that they needed for the entire year, just because that's pretty overwhelming. But for, thank you to those parents that were able to come in and grab those materials each time. Then we'll do that again for the next trimester. Once in a while, there might occasionally be something that we're asking parents to come and get over at the buildings if they can, whether it's little, small guided readers for kids or other additional packets that, you know, maybe go along with specific lessons or curriculum. But that has been going very well as as well. So we appreciate you.
Great, thank you very much, Katie and Kim. We will move on now to our middle school plan. And Derby Weaver is here from Mount Pleasant Middle School, principal. Derby, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me. We're just gonna start back because we have some new board members, but just review a little bit about the cohort model that we have been running here at the middle school. We started in first trimester with our students, first trimester came to school five days a week, and they receive five hours of face-to-face in the morning, and they receive all of their core instruction, ELA, math, science, and social studies. And our sixth graders have two ELA classes, so they receive five hours of core. And our seventh and eighth grade receive four hours of core and one face-to-face elective in the cohort model. All of the students receive two electives that are online in the afternoon. And our afternoon time is used for teachers to teach Oilers online students. And our staff is currently teaching five hours of face-to-face in the cohort model. They have a lunch, and they have a prep, and then one class period to teach online. And then many teachers have been teaching online on their prep periods due to numbers of Euler online students as well. So in first trimester, we were able to accommodate all families' requests if they wanted face-to-face or Oilers online. And first trimester, we were able to do that with six feet social distancing. So second trimester, we made a shift to put in place a virtual Wednesday. The high school had put a virtual Wednesday in, and we thought that it could be something we might piggyback off of to really help alleviate some of the online instruction that our teachers were having to do in addition to their face-to-face, so we could have their Wednesday be able to focus on the online and then also some of the additional tasks that are required with our Euler online programs. So keeping the cohort model in second trimester, we have that, the same thing I just explained about the course subjects. And all families, again, we've fulfilled their request for face-to-face or Oilers online. And the only shift we had for second trimester or have right now is we only have one hour that's actually at a four-foot social distancing. And it's actually a little bit more than four feet. And every other classroom still has six feet social distancing for everyone else. So as we move into third trimester, we have actually 30 online, Euler online families who would like to return to face-to-face, and that would leave us at about 191 Euler online students for third trimester. So we would like to keep that cohort model. We really do trust the safety of that model, and we really would like to keep the social distancing piece. And with the 30 returning students to face-to-face, more of our cohorts will be at the six-foot social distancing with 20 in the room. And then we will still have some classrooms, a little bit more than just one hour, that we either will move to a larger space to make for that more of a space of the six foot, or in the classroom, some of them would adjust between four to six feet. So we have that option with the staff, always talk to the teacher, ask if they feel comfortable with the four to six. If they don't, then we would, or the four feet, you know, less than six feet. If they don't, then we would move them to a larger area like the cafeteria or the choir room and still be able to have that social distancing. So on the next slide, the virtual Wednesday, we did an input survey to the staff on January 24. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone was And I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on what that virtual Wednesday is used for in the building. And there's a lot of communication with online students and families, creating the online assess assignments and assessments with the recording and posting. We have used that time to have two professional development, one hour piece roughly a month. And they've been learning new online instruction techniques, providing feedback, setting up the live sessions, small groups, collaborating with colleagues, two way communication documentation, which you've seen our numbers, we've had great success with the communication that we have had two way with our families up there in the high nineties. And so we're pretty proud of our staff for all the communication they're having with all of their students, not just the Euler online students, professional development. And then they also have student meetings to attend at times. And we have used remote learning essentials, presentations, we've used Joyce Castillon in district. We've used the Claire Gladman R E S D, Gracia Isabella R E S D, and some distant learning playbook videos to continue some professional development for our teachers during our virtual Wednesday time. So with that survey on the next slide, just two pieces of data as we move forward, thinking about virtual Wednesdays is we've already offered quite a bit of the remote learning instruction, but we also have the question of we would still continue remote learning instruction, but would would the staff be willing to have additional professional development? That's not just, you know, about online instruction. We have certain topics like youth mental health, first aid is a topic that we've been trying to get to some staff members. We just had a great presentation from, you know, through a project where. So just some of the P V that we might be able to offer to staff on on some of this time. So I think we had, I think it's like sixty or seventy six point seven percent were yes. And I think it's fourteen percent where maybe that they were okay to look at some different options for P V to utilize during those times as well. And the question that was asked to the M P M S staff is, do they believe that virtual Wednesday should continue? And I believe that's about ninety five point five percent agree that the virtual Wednesdays are very effective and it should be something that we look at continuing into third trimester.
Thank you, Darby. We will now move to Mount Pleasant High School Return to Learn Plan. And we have Jeff Platy and John Winkler here from Mount Pleasant High School.
Thanks for having us. The high school, if you remember, has been in the hybrid model for both trimester one and two. And to give you a little recap on that, we took all of the students that, you know, wanted to be in face to face, it was kind of a daunting test. In the summer, we put together a committee of every, you know, group in the high school from teachers to administrators to secretaries to interventionists, counselors. And, you know, it was a daunting task to figure out how to keep over a thousand kids safe in a building. And so we put together a hybrid model. It, you know, has a blue cohort and a gold cohort, with the blue cohort having face to face on Mondays and Tuesdays and then a virtual learning on Wednesday and then remote learning, usually through Google Classroom on Thursday and Fridays. And the gold cohort cohort was opposite of that, where they had face to face on Thursday and Friday. So we had about three hundred and forty students in each of the cohorts. And then we had another three hundred and sixty students that chose the Oilers online that fluctuates from time to time. The hybrid model, like I said, was designed with the primary purpose of keeping students safe. It was an unpredictable time when we were working on this this summer. We didn't know what to expect, we didn't know how it was going to work in our schools and so on. And for what it was designed for, which was keeping students, you know, COVID safety, it has worked perfectly. It was, you know, a wonderful design that we put together, like I said, and it used things such as social distancing and the mandatory mask and all of the things that the other principals talked about with disinfecting and so on. We changed our arrival and departure time protocols. We changed how we did lunches and the sizes in our classrooms and how we did hallway flow. And like I said, it was very, very successful in what it was designed to do, which was keep students safe in a a time when we didn't know. What the the hybrid were, you know, found out was not extremely successful in for many students was for academic success. I mean, it was, we we found out that some students learning in a virtual method wasn't the best way. We also kind of found out how important teachers are in a face to face model with students. And so many students need to be in front of their, you know, or be with their teacher every single day. And so we we found that was a a struggle in the cohort, you know, models that we had. We also found that, you know, providing mental health supports for our students was difficult when they were not in the building. We tried to do it, but like I said, to getting them to engage in it in a virtual world was difficult. And so what we've seen is increases in failures. We've seen some decreases in attendance rates and increases in the number of students toward struggling with mental health issues and socialization issues. Many students, like I said, learning completely on virtual, they have no problems with that and it works out well for them. But for a lot of our students, whether they be at risk or not, like I said, have struggled with learning in the hybrid model. And so, like I said, we we get to see that the the daily face to face with the teachers, how valuable that was. And, you know, we also realized how difficult it was for parents to support their students from home. On the next one, you can see some of the numbers here. A year ago, for try one and try two, we had about three hundred and twenty five failures in try one, three hundred and fifteen, which comes out to in the eleven thousand total classes that we have, you know, about a six percent failure rate. This year, except now we don't have, try two is not finished yet. And, you know, we we have to try to estimate what it will be. But we're already, we're estimating that we're going to have about fourteen hundred failures, so about a fourteen percent failure rate. We've also seen a decrease in attendance from our high school students. And so there there's some issues that we're concerned with as we went through. It's also very, very difficult for the teachers in the hybrid model because they're essentially teaching two different groups at the same time. They have to try to keep one group going in a remote learning, another group going in a face to face along with those teachers that have to do the Oilers online. And so we did a staff survey and you can see the the first paragraph there is all staff, which included all teachers, all administrators, all secretaries, our Native American office, building interventionists. And you can see it was about a little over seventy three percent that wanted to move to a four or five day week, you know, face to face and about, you know, twenty seven percent that wanted to stay in the hybrid model. When you pull out just classroom teachers who are on the front line, who are having to do two lessons each day and have to, you know, see the lack of engagement from many students and the students struggling, you know, who need help and so on. You can see it jumped to almost seventy eight percent that wanted to go to a four or five day, you know, schedule model with our with our students there. And so they're really on the, you know, front line of it. That doesn't mean that even the ones that want to go to a four or five day still have concerns, you know. Many have been vaccinated and that's helped. And we've created a committee that has both teachers that want to stay in the hybrid and teachers that want to move to a four and five day, similar to what we did in the summer. We started to put together, what would it look like to put together a four day a week, you know, model with a virtual Wednesday still for our students? And we could, we also looked at what would it look like in our building? So this next slide here, right now, we're a little under seven hundred, but we kind of use seven hundred as a thing of our over a thousand students that would be in face to face. And you can see when we started measuring our classrooms, if we used a three foot distance, we could fit thirty two students in most of our classes. If we used a four foot, we could fit twenty six students, five foot, we could use twenty one and so on. You can see that. Our current projections that we were looking at is about two thirds of our classes for third try would would run with twenty students or fewer. So you can kind of see where the spacing would be. Currently, we have six feet of spacing, some classes over that that we use. And about a third of ours classes would run at about twenty one to twenty six. And so you could see we'd be in that four to five foot range, bringing back all of our face to face that are in the blue and the gold cohort here. The other concern besides classroom, you know, basically the kids, we have, we've changed our passing time to about five minutes. And so kids have to move to get to class and so hallway traffic. We changed our arrival and departure times so that those are, you know, the kids enter and exit the building, go right to class. The other area timeframe that was a concern with our staff was lunchtime. And so we started looking at where we were at. And our high school can serve five hundred and fifty students at any given time for each lunch at a distance of three feet and two hundred and seventy five at a distance of six feet, which is what we currently have now. We were running about three hundred and forty kids in each cohort, split in two, because we run two lunches each day. And so we had about a hundred and seventy. And so there was a a lot of space, you know, in our, during our lunchtimes currently. What we would see is currently, like I said, that they would have, you know, as we looked at it, there's going to be. Sorry. We're going to have to look at possibly doing some things with our lunch period, which would be either adding a third lunch, which is probably what one of the things we'll do, which will put in between our two other lunches. And so they'll have a split thing. And the other thing we looked at is getting creative. Many of our teachers already eat with students in their classroom and we would have a cohort that eats with a certain teacher every single day, similar to some of the other levels are doing. We have room one eleven, which seats over a hundred kids, maybe take a group of thirty or forty, show movies in there each day for them. And like I said, so there's lots of different options that we can have to keep the numbers low during the lunchtime period. So what we're proposing to the board tonight is to have you look at two of the options, kind of the two choices that we gave to our staff also. The first one is to stay in our current hybrid model with all of the safety protocols and distancing that we currently have. And the option two would be to move to a four day a week face to face model with Wednesdays being virtual. And this would continue with all of the other safety protocols we have, would reduce some of the classroom spaces to from six feet down to four or five feet, possibly, you know, reduce lunchroom spacing, increase the student face to face time with their teachers, which we know how valuable that is, and have less remote learning on their own. And like I said, we'd also allow students easier access to mental health and other counseling supports that they would be in the building for. Now, both of the options would still have the all, our all virtual option of Oilers online. And so if any parent was not comfortable now with going back, you know, with more students, that would still be an option for them. We also think there's some parents that would move their kids back from Oilers online who now see four days a week is what they've really wanted for their students. And so there's lots of different, lots of different options, but that's kind of what we're asking is to, you know, I mean, you've seen the teacher data, but for you to decide which one it is, we have a committee ready to go with whichever one to, you know, set it up. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Now we'll move to Gracia Isabella Technical Education Center and Mary Kay Oaks.
Good evening, everyone. With the success we have found in trimester two, we would like to share our continued instructional model for trimester three, which is four days of face to face instruction and Wednesdays being virtual remote learning. Four days of face to face has allowed us to offer as strong programming as possible with, of course, safety measures in place. Every G I tech teacher has blended classrooms, which means they have both online students and face to face at the same time. As you'll see, as I've shared here, our total student, twelve hundred and thirty two, out of that, two hundred and thirty three students are virtual, which is a result of nineteen percent of our students that come to the tech center are virtual. Now that means it's more than Oilers online. Every school that sends to us has some virtual components to it or virtual students to it. Our programs vary quite a lot. Some of our programs are up to the high thirty nine percent of the program is virtual and as low as seven percent virtual. The virtual Wednesdays have been very helpful to both teacher and the online student for communication, online sessions for both individual and small groups, time to design the face to face instruction into an online format, and many of the same opportunities that my colleagues have mentioned earlier. We looked at the academic data and have found that the students attending four days are showing increased success compared to those that are attending in a hybrid or fully online schedule. We are continuing to keep school cohorts together as much as possible, which means we try to keep Ithaca together and Beal City together and Mount Pleasant together and things of that nature, both seated in the classroom and in our lab areas. This proactive measure has helped greatly when contact tracing has occurred. Our teachers are keeping very detailed records with seating charts and lab area assignments and they've been following very strictly. So it's very, come in very handy when we have to figure out if an Ithaca student is sitting next to a Shepherd student and so on and so forth. Masks are non negotiable and will continue to be so. Sanitizer and hand washing are other continued protocols. I observe teachers and students frequently grabbing a disinfectant to wipe a workstation, equipment, things of that sort. And as I think Kim had mentioned earlier, G R B S is doing a wonderful job in helping with those touch points and in our labs, on armchairs, you name it, they're doing a very good job in helping us with that. Our arrival and dismissal times vary greatly by sending schools. To give you an example, when our bell rings, we have another twenty five minutes before all of our sending schools do arrive for our A M block. And then likewise, in our afternoon block, about an hour and ten minutes before the end of our school day, those area schools are starting to depart. So we've got that balance. This has been something that the tech center has always managed, but the need for it now to lessen the hallway traffic has been even greater. We have been working through social distancing practices and have made many adjustments along the way as we find what does and does not work. And considering the impact that Mount Pleasant High School may have if they go to a four day model will depend on the individual program. Some of our programs are already experience capacity because they may be made up of more sending schools. So we have already adjusted workstations there. Those that would gain Mount Pleasant students, Mount Pleasant High School students will have to take a look at each individual space and make accommodations accordingly. If we find that there are more students than we can safely accommodate, we may need to look at doing some schedule changes to reduce the distancing to mitigate the risk. Having four in person days to work with, our C T counselor has had more opportunity to support students' mental health. In addition to in person, she has developed a bi monthly program called hashtag be nice that she shares with all C T E students. This program focuses on three main self care components, be nice, be active, and be aware. She was also the co creator of our recent sprinkle kindness virtual program at the high school. Our academic data shows that our students are more successful coming to the tech center in person versus remotely. We offer such hands on learning that is so important in building skills in our programs. We would therefore like to continue our four day in person model for trimester three. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Kay. We will shift now to athletics and Mr. Conway is here to talk more about our athletic programs. We will shift now to athletics, and Mr. Conway is here to talk more about our athletic programs. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. Good afternoon, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, here's just, it's gonna be a quick athletic update. Um, needless to say, our sixth graders through twelfth graders that participate in athletics are extremely happy that, uh, the pause is over, if you will. Um, there's, they're excited, they understand what it takes for this to continue. So, uh, as, as all the administrators mentioned, you know, the protocols are utmost important, and we're gonna continually educate our parents, our spectators as to why those things are important so we can keep playing. So, uh, just a couple of sections, uh, real quick. Competitions, um, for those not in the know, uh, boys and girls basketball, gonna play twelve and thirteen games respective. In a general year, you play twenty. So our coaches, um, across the board actually wanted more quality than quantity. Um, there are certainly schools that played three basketball games last week and had one practice. Um, we elected to kind of slow, um, the process down a little bit and try to get some quality practices in, um, and then therefore play less games, but, but more meaningful games. Uh, hopefully that, that proves, uh, its worth as, as we head into the district. So, uh, bowling, that, we started bowling. Uh, they're down to eight matches. Uh, bowling is, is much different, um, where only two schools compete against one another. Prior to that, we would fill up Riverwood, uh, with every school in our conference. So there would, there would be thirteen schools there, essentially twenty-six different teams when boy and girl, you each get, each gender gets a team. Um, so it's, it's, uh, it's quite minimal, um, but, but it gives the kids a chance to bowl. Uh, we, we will host a school, we, we will go on the road, um, to compete against other schools. Competitive cheer, well, we had our first competitive cheer meet last Friday. Um, much different, uh, as MHSA rules, we're limited to four schools. Uh, over the years, we've had on a Friday night or a Saturday afternoon up to close to twenty, you know, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two schools all at once. So needless to say, the cheer competitions, although still spirited, uh, go much quicker, but the kids are certainly enjoying that, and, and we're gonna spread those out in the next couple of weeks and get ready for district play. Hockey, this, this, this was a tough one for the MHSA. Well, I think there's three schools in the entire state of Michigan that own a hockey rink. Um, Mount Pleasant is not one of those. So it adds a third party into that, what, what was allowable. And, and of course, they all have their rec leagues and their figure skating, and you have to be cognizant, you know, we, we share our rink with, uh, you know, CMU as well. So, uh, we feel fortunate that, um, we're gonna play thirteen games and then, and then obviously, uh, get in the state tournament. So hockey is, uh, we, we did play, uh, three games last week. Hockey is one of those where you could actually work out by rule. Um, there's not a lot of contact in practice with hockey. So when, when they allowed us to come back without the contact, um, hockey took full advantage of that, got their legs in shape and, and, uh, you know, worked on skill that way. So we did play three games last week, uh, with ten remaining until the tournament starts. Skiing, happy to report, uh, the skiing season has been completed. We, we skied today at two o'clock, a very chilly afternoon up there at, at Snowflake. Uh, we had seven meets, including the regionals, which was a week ago. Um, we do have two skiers, uh, both a, a boy and a girl that, that qualified out of the regionals that will go to a state championship, uh, next Monday. But, uh, as far as the team goes, uh, very successful season. Um, everything went well, and, and we were able to get to seven complete meets in there, um, with the eighth being a regional. Wrestling, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit, um, it, a little dicier than, than most sports. Um, there, there was give and take, back and forth, a lot of, will we, will they offer wrestling? Will they not offer wrestling? Um, we elected our league elected not to offer middle school wrestling, um, for various reasons. But, um, high school wrestling is, is moving on. Our first meet is this Wednesday, and, and I'll, I'll talk about the, the protocol here in a little bit, um, uh, with that. So, middle school basketball, boys' basketball, started way back in November. We practiced for roughly four or five days, and then the pause, um, became apparent. So we hung in there and hung in there, and, and we practiced last week for a week. And then we're, we're going to, uh, play six games, um, and, and wrap that season up, which is exactly half. That's very similar to what we did with the girls' basketball back in the fall. We played six dates. Um, the boys were gonna do the same. And for the middle school, um, our league has agreed, we, we just play league opponents. So it's easier to kind of make some rules, if you will, within the league when you have common opponents. And in the middle school, it's two spectators per athlete and coach, which middle school gyms are much smaller than high schools offer. And, um, i- it's gone fine, i- it's gone fine. Um, in all of the sports, uh, all masks will be worn at all times by the athletes, the coaches, the officials, the spectators, and, and the games management, such as my staff, myself, uh, anyone at the scorer's table, that type of thing. So, um, the, the MHSA has done a good job, you know, highlighting the masks and, and how important it is, and, and we will certainly follow through with that. Um, back to, back to wrestling. We will, uh, start tomorrow, we will test every wrestler. Every wrestler in the state of Michigan that wants to compete regular season, and therefore in the postseason, we'll, we'll, we'll have an antigen rapid test. Our training staff are fortunate to have a, a certified athletic trainer. She has two assistant trainers, um, student trainers from Central Michigan. Uh, we got the okay today from Central Michigan that they will help test. I will be part of that as well. Um, the test is, uh, the kids will, will weigh in a day before an, an actual event, and they will weigh in. Once, once they weigh in, they will come back to the wrestling room. We will test them, uh, they, they will, they will take a swab, and within ten or fifteen minutes, we will know if that's, that athlete, uh, tests positive or negative. Obviously, negative tests allows kids to wrestle. And here's the best news for the wrestlers, um, they get to wrestle without a mask. They will wear the mask on the bus, they will wear the mask in the hallway, they will wear the mask when they warm up. But as they approach the mat, uh, they will be allowed to take off the mask, put it in their bag, uh, put it back on the bench, they will be able to wrestle. And then as soon as that bout is over, that match is over, uh, the mask will go, will go back on, which is, it's, it, it was going to be a difficult task to ask kids to wear, to wear a mask in wrestling. We wear headgear, and that's a tough task to keep headgear on, uh, young men and women as they're, they're wrestling each other and, and the mask. So our, our wrestling community is extremely happy, one, um, to be allowed to wrestle, and then two, obviously, um, to have the testing that will allow them to wrestle without a mask. Uh, probably the biggest question that I've received in the last forty-eight, seventy-two hours, spectator limits. Um, the governor and, uh, the MDHSS, uh, allows two-hundred-and-fifty. We, we have arenas, we, we have, uh, you know, our hockey rink's big enough, our gymnasium's big enough. So again, across the league, we, we've, we've agreed to a, you know, a, a, a limit of four spectators per athlete and coaches for, for Mount Pleasant when we're home. Uh, we, we have big enough stands. Not everybody is doing that, so there's a few of us that, that have done that. And then when we are on the road, uh, so we're, we're the away team, uh, each school only allow two spectators. All of those will be, uh, whether it's home or away, uh, every spectator is required to come in and sign with their name and an email address, so contract tracing is there, and, and then they, they just simply, um, pay their five dollars a- as they enter, uh, our, our facility. So we, um, clearly are, are, are crawling or maybe to the walking stage before we run with this. Um, I think our, our, our coaches are, are aware of what's at stake. Our kids are aware of what's at stake. But as, as you've heard, the, you know, the mental health and wellness of these kids to get out and get with their buddies and their friends and to actually compete, um, was, was very much needed. So we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take what we can get. Um, we were hoping it was a little earlier in the, in the, in the actual, um, you know, uh, school year. But, uh, again, we had a fall, a successful fall. We hope that the, the winter takes off the same, and we can have the great results. And then, and then look forward to a, a, a full spring season, get the kids back outside, get the sunshine going, and, and, uh, we can wrap up, uh, a very trying, but, um, uh, competitive athletics for, for Mount Pleasant and across the state, so.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we will move to the community education programs, and Kim Funnel.
Hello there. Can you hear me okay? All right, perfect. Thanks for having me. Um, I am just gonna go real quick through the three programs that I help to supervise. Um, first and foremost, I will echo my colleagues and mention that, um, masks are, are mandatory in our building. Um, we take, uh, every step to make sure that, that they are worn properly at all times. And of course, we encourage our students and staff, um, to wash their hands as often as possible, sanitize, and, um, we, we can't be, um, more thankful to have a GRBS there every day to, um, disinfect all of our high-frequency touchpoints. So, um, with that, I'll just go right in. Um, our ma- way, middle school and high school continue to work in person um, through scheduled lab time. So all of our students have selected a time that works best for them to come into the lab and receive in-person support, um, meet with our counselor, um, collaborate with other groups, um, classmates that they may be working on group projects with um, throughout, uh, Monday through Thursday. Friday is a complete virtual day. Um, and the only real shift here is that we learned our middle school students, um, most of them like coming to school in person in the afternoon times. So the only real shift here for us for third trimester is, um, the first spot in the morning is going to be a, a virtual support, um, followed up with an in-person lab, um, opportunity. We'll sanitize the lab, and we have another in-person lab opportunity for our middle school students. Previous that, to that, um, we had an in-person time first thing in the morning. Um, we had structured in virtual time kind of, uh, a little bit later in the day, and then we had an in-person time. So we just moved that in, or that virtual support, um, to the morning and then shifted our lab in-person times to better match what our students and families are, are wanting. Um, our MPCE programs for our adults, uh, we continue to offer remote options as well as in-person. Um, we're really encouraging our students, our adult students to engage with us. Um, we know that juggling work, and some of them are, are trying to help provide instruction for their families at home. Um, sometimes their personal school takes a back burner. But we are reaching out to our adult learners and, and, um, encouraging them to come back in person. We felt like we were in a, in a good rhythm, um, with many of them coming to school. And then, um, with going into that complete virtual mode, really, um, we're just really trying to reconnect with people and then let them know that we're here, um, Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty until four-thirty. And then Friday, we have, um, opportunities for in-person, um, eight-thirty in the morning until noon. And then our GSRP, we have two classrooms, two preschool classrooms up at the Rose Bush Elementary. Um, with those two classrooms, we have staggered, uh, start times. So one of the classroom starts at eight-fifteen, where the other one starts at eight-thirty. And then they end at different times in the afternoon as well. Um, that seems to have been working really well for us this year, um, reducing the amount of time that, uh, multiple people would be, um, uh, traveling in the, in the hallways or being picked up or dropped off. In addition to that, all of the playground has been sectioned off, so classrooms, um, are able to go outside and play just in their designated section or area. Um, the same with the gym, um, a- any, any class that goes to the gym that day, no other class goes there unless things have been cleaned. And, um, everybody knows that it's safe to, to go ahead and enter. So, um, GSRP is Monday through Thursday as well. Um, that program has always been a four-day program. Um, Fridays are used to connect with families, sanitize the rooms. It's always been something very, um, big with GSRP. You can only imagine classrooms and lots of, um, little things, uh, that need to be cleaned constantly. So we, we felt like, um, in-person, uh, is very important. Um, but we certainly are willing to work with families, um, that do need the flexibility of a virtual option. So, that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Kim. I know that's a lot of information here from all of our different programs. I just wanna wrap things up by just reiterating that we are still following the epidemic orders, uh, released from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. They recently released new gathering guidelines and, um, information that Mr. Conway referred to, um, regarding athletics. Uh, we also are following guidelines that were released by the CDC, which just released new guidelines actually on Friday. Um, the, uh, I believe, uh, Kim and Katie referred to the guidelines, uh, released from the Michigan Department of Education also that look at safety protocols for schools. And we've gone through these different categories, uh, last month. But I just wanna make sure that everyone's aware that we are still committed to all of these areas and all of these requirements, um, that make us compliant with those recommendations. So, having said all of this, I will stop the share of my screen so that we can see all of our panelists again. And I apologize, I know that is a significant amount of information. So I think what we'd like to do probably is open it up for questions from board members. We'll go through those questions first, and then we'll give our public that is with us this evening the opportunity to comment, so.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. Um, first for the middle school, um, the high school gave us a really nice, um, idea of failing, how many people were failing and not failing. Do you guys have any kind of information regarding that? And then second, for both middle school and high school, does anybody do any?
I do.
All right, are you guys hearing me, or is there a lot of feedback there? Okay, or, and, and for both of you guys, were the parents surveyed? I mean, I see where the, the staff was surveyed, but I didn't see anything for what the parents were looking for. Did we do that?
I can go with the answer to that. We have, um, I'll answer first, uh, that the middle school did not do any parent survey for their trimester. We did not, we, I don't believe we did one district by trimester. So it was just the Euler Online families, if they'd like to return. That was the, the parent survey that went out. Um, we did prepare, um, some failure data, just like the high school has theirs, um, written on their slide. For this year, for trimester one, we only had the trimester one data. We didn't move into trimester two. Um, trimester two, we, remember, we spent a lot of that virtual. So looking at trimester one as a final data piece, we have, um, out of, our, our failure rate ends up being about twenty percent for trimester one. And if we look back at for last year, um, it would be roughly about eight percent. So, um, I believe that the high school, you know, had a lower number last, um, year, and then, uh, you know, I think it was fourteen percent or something for this year. So we're finding a lot of our numbers are roughly double when you look at the data. Um, and there's a lot of pieces to consider when we're looking at failure data as our students were also out of school from March all the way to the end of last year, and, you know, started the year in a different situation for academics, so.
We also did not directly survey our parents. We did survey our students, and mostly about what model they wanted to come back in or what, when they wanted to choose for third try. But we didn't offer them the four-day-a-week one because we didn't wanna put the cart in front of the horse, so.
Okay, um, why, why can't we go back five days a week in the middle school and the high school? I mean, I, my, I, I don't understand why we just can't go back. I mean, we're already making adjustments. I, I understand the middle school's big problem is lunch. So I guess, you know, why can't they take lunch in their cohort in a classroom if, if that's an issue or some of them? Is there some way we can do that? Um, I just think, quite honestly, you know, when you go to the CDC site, these kids are at a point-one percent chance of having anything serious happen to them. So they're at a ninety-nine point-nine percent. So they're at a 99.9% recovery rate. And the staff, thank God, has had the option to go get, you know, vaccines, and most of them have taken it who wanted it. I think we're hitting safety marks there. I'm just wondering, because most of the parents who are contacting me want their kids back in school full-time. And I guess I want to, I think we need to explain to them why we can't do it. I mean, is it because the staff doesn't want to? You know, or is, you need to give them a reason why we can't go back to school five days a week.
I know at the high school, we talked about this a little bit. We were concerned a little bit with returning, you know, the rigor and having high school students be able to adjust from two days a week, face-to-face, going right to. I mean, our end goal is to be at five days a week, you know, and we hope by next fall to be in that mode. But we were a little worried about our students being able to adjust to the rigor of five days a week. The other thing was, is we feel like our students between last spring, you know, basically being completely out of school except for a packet distribution, and also what we've kind of put them in with the remote learning and stuff this year, we feel like that's a great day to have a lot of remediation stuff, get them caught up and have the, you know, try to reteach some of the skills in small groups and stuff that wouldn't be available in the large group. We're still working on how to fine-tune our Wednesdays to be the best, you know, learning opportunity. But a lot of our teachers have been using it as a day to work with smaller groups and especially ones that need to be caught up in certain skill areas because of many of the pandemic things that we've had. And so I know what you're saying, and our goal is to get to five days a week and so on. We just think this would be a nice transition, and we can hopefully use it to help our most at-risk students that we have on those Wednesdays. You know, the AP classes will probably just keep going with virtual learning. They've done well all along and so on. But in some of these other classes, it will be a good opportunity, we hope, to provide some remediation for some of our students who need it.
I have a couple of questions. And first of all, I really want to thank all of you for taking the time to do this. This was an immense amount of work. And I really appreciate how it was separated by grade and really highlighted what you wanted kept the same and why, and what you wanted different and why. And from a board member perspective, although it was a lot of information, that really made it straightforward to understand. And I don't know, maybe instead of going and talking about all these schools, since all models are a little bit different, I wonder if as board members, we could concentrate, maybe walk through just the way the presentation was, just concentrate on the elementary and figure out, ask our questions, and then move on. Because I find that, you know, I have, I have a million questions on each of those, and I don't want to just bombard them. And so I wondered if that's what K A. means, that we kind of proceed chunk by chunk?
Sure, so you want to start with the elementary first?
I mean, that's how it was shown to us. I don't really have a preference, as long as we kind of, you know, proceed. Because I feel like the information was quite a bit different for each of them.
Okay, so go ahead and ask your questions on about the elementary.
Thank you. And so my first question, so if I understand right, and Kim and Katie, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, is the main difference would be reduction of the social distancing to allow the increase of our class size for those online orders that are returning. Other than that, I, you know, I felt like the rest was fairly similar to what you've been doing. And so that would lower our social distancing right now for everyone who was six feet. And that would lower to, for some cases, down to three feet. Is that correct?
I believe we already had that range, right, from four to six feet and try two. And we've maintained as close to, in that four to six foot. Yep, we want to bring in that conversation with what Dr. Morris had shared and now the new NDE update when looking at our youngest learners. A minimum of three feet was required. And we need some flexibility with that in some of our grade levels. We will maintain as many feet as possible in classrooms and spaces where we can. But we do need some leniency on that three feet in order to fulfill some of our requests from families about their try-three plans. And that is the biggest change, right, Kim? That?
The only change.
Yeah, the only change, yeah.
And so if we do reduce the three feet, we can accommodate everybody, is what I'm understanding?
Yes, we believe so. I know we just had some last-minute changes, even though our survey came, was due last week, but some last-minute changes that came in for some grade levels. So we need to go back, a couple of classrooms need to go back in buildings to relook at things. But yes, we believe that that will be sufficient.
And so my follow-up question then is, are families aware of that? Because that might change, right? We're having a pretty big reduction in social distancing. That might change how people feel either way, right, from face-to-face to online or vice versa on those decisions. Do we have a way to communicate that to families so that when they sign up, they know what they're signing up for?
So it's really only a reduction of one foot in some cases, you know, when we gave the range going back to second tribe, four to six feet. But to your point, yes. So after decisions are made this evening, all of our families will be notified. And although that's a specific elementary question, I think that that applies to all grade levels and all buildings, that our families need to be informed that this is what face-to-face will look like. And if you would prefer to put your child in a virtual program, you would have the option to do that.
Thank you. I only have one more for elementary. Do we require masks to be worn at recess as well? I know you stated universal mask-wearing, and I wasn't sure what was happening at recess.
We have not. We've allowed the students and the staff, if the staff feel comfortable enough, to unmask during recess time because we're out in the open and in the fresh air. As we do recess duty, we tend to see a lot of students that still wear them, I think just because they're just naturally used to it. And then even when it's been a little bit chillier out, I think it actually keeps them a little bit warmer, so they have actually enjoyed it. But it has been meant to give them a break.
Great, thanks.
Is there any other questions about the elementary from any of the board members? Okay, if there's not, then let's go ahead to the middle school. If there's any questions about the middle school.
Can I answer Sheila's first? She had, she had her question earlier, so I just wanted to address a few things that she brought up. The, we have looked into and investigated what the middle school could look like going back to an eight-period day. And we actually did some investigating on if we could attempt to build an eight-period day with the cohort model. We have really built a great cohort model here with the safety of our students and staff in mind. And with having, you know, only one hour currently that is not at six feet, I think that's pretty amazing. And every family is receiving the instruction that they've requested. So anyone who's asked for online gets that, and anyone who's asked for face-to-face receives that instruction. When looking at an eight-period day with a cohort model, we run into a couple of situations, and lunch is one of them. And in the guidelines for lunch, they're requesting that we keep that six-foot social distance because they do have their masks off. And for the middle school to run lunchtime at six feet social distancing, we'd have to have 13 lunches. And we did our measuring, we've done our spaces. Our kids go to lunch for 21 minutes, and then they have activity time for 21 minutes. So we also looked at what a lunchtime could look like, where they stay in their cohort, and we have some supervision. But again, when I mentioned earlier in the cohort, our teachers teach at five hours in the morning, and they have their lunch, their prep, and then they teach online. So we have to find time for our teachers to have the supervision of the kids eating lunch and then also then their own time that they contractually receive. And then in the PM, if we kept a cohort, remember, our teachers are still teaching Oilers online, but I also would need teachers to teach face-to-face. So a lot of options have been investigated with that. But if we are going to continue with Oilers online, I feel like it's a struggle to have enough staff members to do that in the afternoon. We also looked at what an actual normal eight-hour period day would look like in real world. And that would be taking social distancing out, catch tracing out. And I really think that would be not one to the best interest for our students and our staff. So a response to parents, a reason why. Consistency is one piece, where our students have had this cohort model already first and second try. All families are receiving the instruction that they want. And we have moved kids in and out constantly. If there's ever a waitlist, it might be two weeks just due to we're getting close to a trimester. But we have honored everyone's request. And then safety is huge with the four to six feet. And I mean, it would do, end up going to three feet, but I don't even see the middle school needing that. Masks at all time without the lunch period. We send lunch home to anyone who wants one. They get a to-go lunch, and they also get breakfast in the morning. Passing time, again, is a place where safety is needed and contact tracing. And I worry that if we were to go do a different type of model, that we would actually lose some of those face-to-face students to online due to, you know, when they fill out those surveys, they really think that they're returning to the model that we, that were happening, and they feel comfortable with that. Same thing, just the biggest concern is we have, as we continue with the Oilers online, you know, our staff has quite a bit of expectations. And I think that keeping a cohort model for safety is the biggest number-one reason. And number two is the time and supervision. And I don't, the staffing that we would need to go back to an eight-period day was 60 in mind.
Darby, what would it look like if you were to do a five-day? I understand that the staff want to have the day in you on Wednesdays, and you gave a great model for that. But what would it look like if we had a five-day plan, but kept the cohort, kept everything as you're discussing, but did do it five days?
And it would look just like it did first trimester. And, you know, we would, would make it work. I just, I mean, I do worry about the staff and the amount of additional pieces that we do have with having the online portion. But I do think that if that's something we'd like to discuss, we can, you know, we can look into that. Yes, we've done it.
Are you feeling like the Wednesdays are utilized for the purpose of teaching the online and doing everything they need to be doing, or what are your thoughts on that?
I do, I do. In the survey, there, there were even more questions in the survey. But I think that, like 95 to 97%, they, it was pretty glaring that they utilize the Wednesdays, and it's really needed. And I think, I think the whole piece of over 200 students that are online and the additional type of communication that we have to have, and I've already said this, but we, we have been working really hard. The most communication we've ever made, I believe, in the middle school, we're making this year. You know, with the two-way, and then we also have an additional two-way document that we're working on right now. And we only had, in a week, we only had like 2% of our population that we have not made contact with. So right now, before Wednesday, we have a whole team of people who are going to make that additional contacts. Our number's 100%. So we, you know, those lost children that, you know, maybe we mentioned, but we are doing everything we can to communicate with 100% of our kids on so many different levels. So the Wednesdays are huge for that.
I thank you, Darby, for all this information. I don't have any questions for the middle school, I feel that was very clear. And I have just been so happy with the way the cohort has allowed for the quarantining in small groups rather than these large bunch of kids at once. And if it's working well for you guys, and obviously it seems like it is, I'm all in favor of continuing that.
Was there any questions for the high school then?
Hi, I have a question. I mean, the CDC has been invoked a few times. You know, after mask-wearing, social distancing is the most important mitigation strategy that we have, most important tool. I'm really concerned about the idea of lunchtime being three feet of social distancing. I know that there was mention of some more creative solutions. But I would feel better if I knew that there was a commitment to some creative solutions that would prevent lunchtime mask-free kids being three feet apart. Thank you.
I think I heard it was you were questioning about lunchtime distancing. You said, "We think we can still keep the six feet apart with some creative things." We're definitely going to add the third lunch, which will take care of that question also. But then we also wanted to have some creative time where we could have them eat, you know, many of our students eat with their teachers already. And so we thought that would be a good time to put small group of 10, let's say, in classrooms with them, utilize some of our big, you know, areas such as room 111, which can hold about 100 people and has a theater-type shape. So we were looking at just different ways to not only keep the six-foot distancing. Our building is a big area, our lunchroom is a big area. We have a commons area out front that students eat in. They can eat, you know, they used to eat in the hallway a lot, you know, in previous times. Now, like I said, we've kind of shut that down because usually they were trying to be next to each other and so on. So there's lots of things we can do. We were not as concerned about lunchtime for the six-foot, you know, keeping that. We think we can do that with, you know, for sure, the, just by adding the third lunch, we'll make it happen. And then we're also going to be creative in some other ways too, so.
Thank you very much.
I kind of have a follow-up question on that. So one of the biggest benefit I thought of your cohort of the blue and the gold was the ability to contact trace and mitigate when there was a case, how many kids actually was exposed. How would this work with a four-days-back a week? I mean, how much mixing is there, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask.
We've always had, you know, some mixing in the hallway, but the time limit was so small that it really didn't become a factor in there. The main areas when kids are together for extended periods are in the classroom and at lunchtime. And so in the classroom, you know, what it might mean is that before, nobody, you know, teachers had seating charts that they held students to, and they were six feet apart. And so we could just, unless there was some special case, we could say, nope, nobody was within six feet of them for more than 15 minutes when we did the contact tracing. We could have a couple of classes where we're down to five foot. And so we now may have to say, yep, this person to the east, the west, you know, and so on. So we definitely could have a few more quarantining situations. We think lunch will probably stay about the same. But, you know, it's really just, there will be some closer contacts under that six feet possibly. But we still think, well, as I said before, most of our classes will be in that 20 to, you know, 21 range, which puts it at. which puts it at five feet. So there may be, depending on where they're at in the room. You know, instead of before, nobody with as a close contact, now there might be one or two that we have to quarantine. So.
Thank you, John. And the other thing that might change too is, again, if we communicate to families, the differences it, you know, the ones that are not comfortable with this can always choose to go back to an online orders. And so as long as we communicate this information early enough to that families make an informed choice.
So Willie and I.
And that's. That's why, you know, we've kind of put two different plans out there. And soon as we get the okay on one of the two, we're going to start moving forward. Like I said, we already have our committee that started looking at that. And so we're gonna, we're gonna work through that and start our communication process soon as we find out.
So Willie and I just want to comment that I do anticipate with the high school returning four days a week, that there there will be the potential to have more students end up in quarantine. I I just think having more students together when we have those positive cases. And it may not be significantly more, but we've been, I'm going to use the word lucky, that we've had students where they've been in very small classes when they have been in the building or a student that has tested positive that because of the cohort hasn't even been in the building for a few days. So obviously, if we have students back four days a week, I I do anticipate there will be more. I don't think it's going to make a huge difference. But I I think the reality of it is, we have to, we have to be very forthright with that, that we are still going to have COVID positive cases and we are still going to be quarantining students and staff. And so that is what it is. We will cross that bridge and approach every situation as a unique situation. But I don't foresee our stance on the need to quarantine softening because of this. We will still move forward and follow our protocols as we have all year because they work for us. And so we're not going to change that. But I think your point is a valid one. I think that's the other reason to remember why we're having this conversation tonight, so that we do have almost a whole month to plan and prepare and to make sure that families have that opportunity to make that choice that's best for them.
Thank you, Jenny, for I, it makes sense. And I mean, what that means is that families may have a choice. If we choose option to to go back four days a week instead of to knowing that they might end up with that yo yo situation a little bit more often, right? That they increase their chances of quarantining. And I think that's an important component that families need to be aware of. My last point on this, and it's more of a point of discussion rather than a question, is that one concerns I would have is a lot of our families are in multiple buildings. And arguably, the biggest change we're discussing tonight is that of the high school. And if we increase the risks there, we then increase the risk potentially in other buildings, even though they're not changing, just just because of the fact that we do have multi, you know, multi building families. And so that is something, you know, that we can consider as well. But thank you, John. I don't have any further questions.
Is there any other questions then for any of the other that presented from anybody?
I have a question that is kind of a.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
But it's kind of over the high school and the middle school. Because I'm, I'm liking that the pattern is similar for the high school and the middle school. That kind of narrows down the variations that we have going on. And I've a lot of comments from families trying to juggle both of the difficulties. So really, and it's kind of harkening back to Sheila's question of why not five days? Whether it is in the, in the middle school with the cohort structure, with the cores in the morning and the extracurriculars in the afternoon online. Or through the high school with it being five days a week all day long. And the question that I actually have for John is, in the high school model, teachers get a prep and a lunch period during the day. And then do they all get one online class? Or do some teachers do all of the online classes and none of the face to face? So the idea is the with the, do the, do the teachers need the extra one Wednesday free to do prepping other things? Or is there enough time during their regular time? Again, with the idea of your proposing of the, our goal is to get them back five days a week, every day, all day. So I'm just trying to figure out where that could look like and what we would look at to see where that would happen. If we are already there or working toward there. Because a lot of the COVID structures are already in place. I mean, so if you, you know, Wednesday is not needed for deep cleaning because the cleaning is done all the time, every day, all day long. And so I'm just trying to see if we're at that place at the high school, let's say, to have it five days a week, having the kids there face to face five days a week. And is there still a value, which primarily seems to be a value of teacher prep, PD, and maybe some communications with students on that Wednesday? Is that still needed now?
Okay, quite a, quite a few things there. So first off, you, you know, you ask, is it still needed? And, you know, I mean, most of our teachers, I'll go back to the the first question that was, do our teachers teach a variety of it? We have some teachers that were more comfortable teaching online. And so we gave them the majority of their schedule. We're teaching Oilers online virtual classes. But a lot of our teachers have a mixed schedule where they have face to face students for maybe, you know, three of their classes. And then their other one is a virtual or vice versa. So most of ours have a mix of, you know, virtual and Oilers online classes that they have. In terms of the, we, we were looking as kind of a transition. We use the Wednesday, like I said, it's been great for using it to work in smaller groups, do a lot of the things that they currently, you know, I mean, when the English classes are doing silent sustained reading and some of these other issues that they can, you know, the assignments that they have that usually are just working in class type things, we can do some of those on the Wednesdays. But I mean, we, we could move back to five days a week. We were just a little bit worried about the transition for not only the students, but also, you know, I mean, it still gave us a day where, okay, it's one less contact day that the students were all together in there. And, you know, we think we have done a pretty good job with the virtual learning. So we think that would, we, we definitely had concerns with just staying at two days face to face because it was such a discontinued. They went Monday, Tuesday, and then we didn't see them again until Monday, face to face and so on. Whereas in a four day, we thought, okay, we're going to see them Monday, Tuesday, still virtually see them on Wednesday and then go back face to face again Thursday, Friday. So really, it was just a transition thing, you know, we thought, as went through to see how it worked. And it, and it still minimized the the risk a little bit, we thought, by having one day still virtual. And it also lessened the, by by not having the hybrid, it lessened the teachers really having to do two lesson plans at any given time for each class because they had the blue and the gold cohort each hour having to do different things. So I, I hope that answered.
Yeah, because really the model now is they have three sessions. They have a blue class, a gold class and an online class. So they actually have three classes. So by going all day, we're taking them down to potentially two classes, you know, for every subject. And so I was just wondering if that need of that prep time of the entire day is still of value. And it sounds like you're recommending that it is of value. I, I think the kids are resilient enough. I don't think they're going to notice coming back to five days a week. That's what they've been doing most of their lives. So I don't think it's going to be too challenging of a transition. So it's really looking at, can the teachers keep the rigor and the preparedness without having a fifth day? Or do they still need that, learning the tools and trying to improve on the tools? Darby, do you feel that if you had your, I understand the value of the cohort structure of the morning for the core and the afternoon for extracurricular. You feel that having core five days a week is of value or something that is, again, the idea being that going back to all day, every day is the goal. How can we do that? What would it look like to get there? And, you know, teachers still have a prep time and lunchtime currently because they're still working the eight hour day. And so now they actually have prep time and lunchtime. And I know many of them are teaching online class during their prep time. And so that I could see more value for that Wednesday since they're doing kind of an overload as it is. But I just wanted you to speak a little bit more to help clarify that five day, four day idea.
Well, another, one thing that we changed this year in order for our staff to teach Euler online was we normally at the middle school have a team prep. And that's something that all of our teachers have, and we don't have that this year. We, we were, we took that team time to have our teachers be teaching Oilers online. And so, so all of our teachers, after the PM, all of them have a lunch, a prep, if they have a prep or if they're teaching overload, and then they all have an Euler online. So, um, so when I think of the number of teachers who actually only really get a lunch because they do teach an overload of for the Oilers online, plus they have their team prep that's now Oilers online. I do think that, that the number of staff and the time that they need, I do think the virtual Wednesdays are beneficial for that. But hearing what you're saying by going, the goal of going or heading back toward a five day, I mean, that is something that, of course, we would we ourselves off of the virtual Wednesday and work through five days of the cohort model. We did it first trimester, like I mentioned to Amy. And the biggest stressor of that was the time. And we were also learning the ropes then first trimester with online instruction. And we do kind of have a pattern and some things in place. I just think we have a lot of additional pieces to being online teachers that I think that time is very beneficial for the staff. But if our goal is to move towards five days, we would like to keep the cohort model for the safety of everyone. And, and we can discuss if if you think virtual Wednesdays are not where we'd like to be for their try.
Thank you. I'm just looking for clarifications. Most of the communications I'm getting from families are regarding, right? So I think we can talk more about how that is and why that's the value of the four days right now. Their knowledge to help them better understand some of the decisions that we're making. So thank you to both of you for.
Yeah, and if I can jump in real quick for just a minute too, since I have my hands in the scheduling so much. We've worked really hard to reduce our class size. And one way we've done that is by having teachers teach on their prep hours and stuff. Some of the trade off is that the teachers, you know, are are busy and going 900 miles an hour from 7:00 AM till 4:00 in the afternoon and stuff. So that doesn't leave them time on prep hours to connect with the struggling learners and things like that. So losing our Wednesday in a lot of ways means two things. It means our class sizes would get bigger because the teachers wouldn't be able to handle the overloads and the the work level. So if we eliminated Wednesdays, our class sizes would get bigger. And if we eliminated Wednesdays, it's fewer opportunities. I mean, there's still gonna be opportunities, but there'd be fewer opportunities to connect with our struggling learners, whether it's a special ed student or just a student that has unique needs and things like that. So, um, well, I would love to be in school five days a week with our current staffing levels and with the needs of our kids. I think four days a week better serves our staff and our student needs.
Thank you, Jeff.
If I could jump in as well, all of the CTE teachers are teaching blended. So that means that they have an every, every hour all day online and in face to face person teaching. So Wednesdays are very imperative for them. That is the only day that they can do one on one or small group with their online students. Many of the staff down our end of the building also do teach on their prep hour. So that's the same thing as, as Jeff had stated, you know, that puts them even, they meet with students in the evening as it is now. So I feel Wednesdays are very important to keep open for that virtual to support students, whatever type of student they are, and to give the teachers the appropriate time to plan and grade and paperwork and remediate and all, all of the above.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
Yes.
That's all the questions I had, Amy.
I, I just wanted to thank Katie too for coming back to this virtual Wednesday question for the elementary school. I know I brought that up several times and I appreciate the conversation. I do feel a little bad for elementary teachers that, you know, at this point would be the only ones without the virtual Wednesday because I'm sure they are overwhelmed as everyone else. But I also do appreciate, you know, what, what's in place, what's going on and the fact that, you know, the, the march looks a little bit different as we go on. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I heard that conversation and I don't want it to just say thank you.
Is there any more questions or comments for, for anybody on the panel right now from our board members? John, do you think it's time to open it up to public comment? Well, I'd just like to mention that we are going to open up to public comment. This is the time for public comment specific to the extended COVID-19 learning plan. We will have a public comment as well. We do expect to hear from many of you tonight as there has been a lot of communication with the board. We are hoping to keep it to the, the three minute. We will be keeping it to the three minute time limit. And we also will have you raise your virtual hand. John will, just as we have in other meetings, John will then be able to call on you and we will be able to go from there. John, do you have anything to add to that?
No, the only other thing I wanted to add for our community members that are joining us, so I'd like to speak. It is helpful if you were introduce yourself using your first and last name and state your address. That's something that we've always required in our in person meetings. And we have gotten away from that in our virtual meetings. So if you would like to make comment this evening, I just ask that you raise your virtual hand. When it's your opportunity to speak, I will unmute your microphone or I'll allow you to speak. You have to unmute your microphone. And then if you can introduce yourself using your first and last name and your address, that would be great. Okay, and I believe we do already have a few people that have raised their hand. So first is Kathy. Kathy, are you there? Kathy, can you hear me? Kathy, are you there?
Yes.
Did you have something, did you want to make comment this evening?
No, I'm sorry. I must have accidentally hit my hand. Sorry.
That is okay. No problem at all. All right. So let's see. Bree, are you there?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yep, go ahead.
Yep. Hey, this is Bree Moganberg from Mount Pleasant. I have two children enrolled in the district. With much respect, I'm going to be really direct. First note that I'm disappointed that parents didn't get a survey, but staff and students did. Also, I know you've all worked hard, but your plan is a continued mess. And we've seen it in other schools already, and it has proven to fail our students. By the way, teachers are spectacular and greatly appreciated. But I assure you, they are not on the front line and our schools are not a battlefield. However, let's set feelings aside of what people want and decide what our students need for success. That is the job of our staff. We need regular learning, not the juggle mess that's happening. Do you find it alarming at all that it has been deemed by schools that we are not super spreaders? Yet we have spent so much time over three, four, five or six feet of distance concerns? Let's eat lunch together. Let's build our kids' mental health backup and problem solve. We don't even have to consider talking on it anymore. All of our county schools currently practice different learning instruction, including that which was just proposed. What you are proposing sounds a lot like that already practiced by a surrounding school. And I haven't noted that their failure rates have doubled since last year. Here is fact, despite these structures, student failure is still up. Specifically in our high school, you posted failure rates per class that reveal a lower failure number than that which I have per student. And that is an average of 25% of our high school students are failing a minimum of one class. What has been common amongst all of the different school structures are the practices of isolation, mandates and the altered and stressful bouncing of the online, offline, mixed up, part time learning environment. Based on our district data. environment. Based on our district data, quarantining many individuals to prevent the spread has also not proven to be advantageous. If it were, you would see an exponential increase of positive cases in the same school within the two weeks following that exposure. And that is not seen in these reports whatsoever. And therefore, the social distancing and the nonsense and the juggling really needs to stop. If quarantine isn't worthwhile, neither is the, the worry over the cohorting. It is so damaging and it's not possible to follow these cohorts if we're going to worry about the mental health of our kids. The COVID pattern rise, by the way, of infection that was seen during the regular annual virus season, which is nothing new. Note that those cases were also seen while schools were on break and while they were online only for all of those weeks in December and in January. Keep in mind that death is tragic. However, in our county, under the age of 40, there have been zero deaths. In other words, there have been zero deaths in our youth. Did like, I'll say that one more time. There have been zero deaths in our youth. However, there has been an epidemic increase in the loss of mental health and failure amongst hundreds of our students and it can take years for them to recover from that. The CDC reports that mental health visits to hospitals have risen on an average of 28% for five to 17-year-olds. Based on a recent Morning Sun article by Eric Barron, our school officials reported the concern about the mental health and wellness for staff, an increase in teacher resignation and retirement. And our superintendent stated that she is concerned for the learning loss of all students. Thank you for that. We clearly all agree on that. We need regular full-time structure. Please stop stressing our kids and staff. We do not want to do what neighboring schools have done that has already proven not to work. Are you guys going to continue to do what hasn't worked or are you going to step up and start doing what works for our kids?
Thank you, Bree. Next we have Kelly. Kelly, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kelly Strom. I live in Mount Pleasant. I have two students, both at the high school. Um, and I'm going to speak very differently than the last. Um, I think the hybrid has worked as best as it can. Um, I am a parent who only put my kids in a hybrid because I couldn't get guaranteed their classes if they were online. And so, and both of my children report there are multiple kids every day wearing their masks below their noses. Some teachers ask them to raise them, some just ignore it. Some wear them on their chin. I am, everything that we've heard all CDC guidelines say that six feet is very important. We're talking about not maintaining that. I am concerned what happens if we bring all these students back. We have a major outbreak because we now have the new strains circulating that are more contagious. And then what, we're going to have to go all virtual again. That would be my concern. Um, but I fully understand that it is important for kids to go back to school. I'm thrilled that teachers were able to get vaccines. The problem is you've got at the high school, students who are not qualifying for vaccines. You've got some who aren't even in age that can get it when it becomes more available. Um, and I know they might not die, but they still are going to bring it home to their families and to their relatives. Um, and my other, my, my basic question is, I may utilize my kids to be very upset with me, but I may utilize the right to put mine online only. Um, again, my question is what it has always been, is my son who's in AP classes going to be able to get those? And speaking to what Mr. Winkler said earlier, that AP macroeconomics class has been phenomenal. And I'll tell you why. Every day you're virtual, they expect you to be in the classroom at the time of the class attending. So they're not doing two lesson plans. They're doing one class and whether you're virtual or in person, you're in that class, you can ask questions. And some of my daughter's classes are doing that as well. So that's another option for teachers to consider if they're not all doing that. And, and I do appreciate everything you guys have done. I know this is a terrible time and I hope that by the fall, more people can get vaccinated and this won't even be an issue and will be five days without any question. Um, that's just my concerns. I just wanted to voice them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Next we have Christine. Christine, are you there? Christine, are you there?
Hello?
Hi Christine, we can hear you.
I'm Kelly Fountain. I live at 811 South Franklin. I'm just a concerned citizen of Mount Pleasant. I have, I reviewed the data failure rates of our school and the data shows that we need to move forward today and open up our schools fully without shutting down again. I would like to know what the remedy would be to catch our children up in their academic education that is lacking due to the virus and the schools not being open fully face-to-face learning. Each child is entitled and required by law to a full year of education to get them to the next year of schooling. And if they are failing, it's up to the school to figure out what to provide to get them back on track. The parents and taxpayers have already allocated funds for education. The buildings that are not being used 100% capacity. COVID relief money also has been allocated for the schools. Other schools do shorter days and teach, um, and the teachers have prep time for the students. So here's a few questions I have that I would like to be asked. What are the recommendations to get our students back on track to eliminate the failure rate? How is this back and forth education affecting our special ed learning? Who will be paying for the, for the remedy to get a, get back on track? Um, if there's summer school or tutoring, will the buildings and teachers be available in person? Do we need to hire more teachers since they are overwhelmed? Um, and during the summer, is their busing going to be available for any of the students? And what would it take to get, get us back on to 100% face-to-face? Basically, I was just trying to figure out what the best plan would be to get us, get our kids educated. Thank you for your time and hopefully we can be meeting face-to-face next meeting with the answers and thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next we have Cynthia. Cynthia, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would like to say I'm mostly concerned about the upping the number of days due to the, the new strains coming in. I do have a student, sorry, I am from Mount Pleasant named Cynthia View. I have a student that is a junior. She has been online since last March. Is she struggling? Yes. Is she having mental health issues? Yes. But she's at risk. And I think we really need to look at those students that are at risk and realize that this, these new variants are coming out. I think what the teachers are doing now is great. I would like to note that I have noticed there is still, which we talked about earlier in the year, a difference in how much work there is for the online compared to the students that are in class. There seems to be much more for the online students, which is hard for the main fact that they don't get the chance to go to school a day and then say, yes, cool, it's over, we can go home. Because they already are home. There's no break in between. They're sitting at their computers all day. And then most of the time with my daughter, she's sitting at her computer all night. So there's no break at all. Um, I would love to send her to school, but then you also gotta remember, a lot of these students can't get vaccinated till they're 16, if they can even get on the list, if they can even qualified for the vaccine. My daughter luckily does qualify, but there's, you gotta think of the sophomores and the freshmen that, and some of the juniors, the soon-to-be juniors, that are, are not going to be qualified to get a vaccine. So that's my only concern is raising up the days and the, the more homework on the online students than the, the in-person students. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next we have Colette. Colette, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Colette Hamlin. I am a resident of the city of Mount Pleasant on Isabella Road. I have two students at the high school, one who is fully online and one who is hybrid. I have a student who is failing a couple of classes and I have a student who is excelling but has been medicated since this pandemic began. And I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, I want to acknowledge that I think our community forgets that you have an ridiculous amount of people who think about this all day, every day, who look at data from the CDC, from the Health Department, from countless organizations who are looking at the best thing to do for our kids. Um, I want to address the comment that, um, our teachers are not on the front line. Our teachers are absolutely on the front lines. We have asked so much of them through this entire process and they have risen again and again. And again, and I'm so proud of the teaching staff at Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Um, I would just urge you to please do whatever you feel is necessary and in the best interest of our kids. I know that you are looking carefully at every option and every opportunity to take the best care of our kids. And to just please do whatever science and actual facts are telling you to do in this situation. And I, I think your staff was pretty clear in the survey on how best that they could be served moving forward into this third trimester. And so I'd encourage you to really hold their opinion in the highest esteem possible because they are the ones who are doing this all day, every day for our students. So I thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate the effort that you're putting into this. And whatever you decide tonight, I know that you are doing it knowing the weight of what you carry. And I thank all of you very much for the effort that you have made since last March. And that is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Colette. Next we have Maria. Maria, are you there?
Sorry. I was just so mad at Bree Morgenberg.
Maria, are you there? Maria, can you hear me?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, we do. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am Maria Gonzalez. I live in Mount Pleasant in East Grand Avenue and I have an eighth grader at the middle school. He's coming for the third trimester in person. We've been doing online. It's been a challenge and we are not very convinced about going back in person, but he needs to do that. I just want to comment that, yes, there are one or zero percent of death in the youth because you guys did your job. If you guys didn't have done all the data recognition that you do, all the precautions, all these, this juggling that may be imperfect, uh, we will have, have more problems. So yes, I am concerned now that we have a strongest virus around, but I want to thank everyone for the work and, and please, please consider the evidence, the data. Uh, it's hard for everyone. It's hard for all the families, but the teachers are theirs. And yes, the teachers are frontline workers. They are doing double job. They are doing their face-to-face work and they're doing their online work. So that Wednesday that is so discussed is needed. It's needed. It's not for the teachers to go and have donuts. I know that. So don't gamble with that. They need that. The teachers need that time to prepare, to reach the students who, who are out of reach and they need the time to, to, to calm them down. And I can imagine being, doing this double job for so long and having their own families and everything else. So please, please consider that. The teachers are from what, from line workers and they need all our respect and our consideration. And yes, I know we are, we are losing some staff. Kids are losing learning. It's not the most important thing. Life is important, right? So yes, kids are falling behind. They are going to catch up. Okay. It's not the end of the war. They, we are not going to go down to a third world country because our kids are falling behind six months in learning. So that's all what I have to say. Thank you, everyone. Sorry, I got emotional. That's it.
Thank you, Maria. Ms. Adam, are you there? Adam, are you there? Can you hear me, Adam? Adam Dale, can you hear me? Okay, I'll go on to the next person and we'll see if we can try to get Adam again. Michelle, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I always like to listen in and everything. And I, I want to say like, for the high school, I'm sorry, I'm Michelle Maury. I'm Mount Pleasant. I have two high schoolers, a freshman and a senior. Um, my senior has been doing hybrid this entire time. My freshman has been doing virtual. Uh, my freshman has trouble wearing masks for extended periods of time and she also having ADD needs consistency. She needs to either be all or nothing, one way or the other, her feelings on that regard. So I think that the four day could be a good balance. I really see with both of my girls that their teachers are reaching out to them big time on Wednesdays. I feel like the teachers are really utilizing those Wednesdays to make connections with students that maybe they haven't gotten to talk to one-on-one. Um, maybe they're just hosting a Google Meet. Maybe they don't all have to log in every single time. But on, from what I'm seeing when I'm here with them, I'm really seeing Wednesdays getting utilized. So I do feel that the teachers are making a good use of that on the high school level. I can't speak for the other schools. And I think on the elementary level that daycare, even if it's once a week, can be difficult and those kids definitely need daycare. Where on the high school level, you don't necessarily always for every student. Some may, maybe not. But, um, the one thing I will say that I don't like with the virtual is the Odyssey Ware classes. I don't think that my freshman is getting much out of those. I feel like they're a wasted hour and I'm really trying to push her to go face-to-face. Um, so I wish there was something else that we could do with that. Um, my concern with that, of course, is she would require mask breaks in there and I'm not sure how that looks like on the high school level since they have such little time between classes. There's no way, um, my high school, my senior has told me that she barely has enough time to make it from one class to another. And if she had further to go, she would not make it in time. So that would be my only concern. But I think, you know, if we keep these hybrid models the way they are, we're losing so many students mentally. Um, I've seen a decline in my students, in both my girls, in their mental health. Um, and we're making them more afraid, I feel like, as, as parents. Um, it's okay to be cautious and it's okay to be afraid of the unknown to some degree, but we can't make them afraid to live. And I think that we really need to get back to living on some level here and do so cautiously, follow precautions, do everything we can. But we need to get them back out there to a regular schedule to get them up and moving. So they're not just laying in bed. It's gotten to where my freshman used to sit at her desk every day and now she just lays in bed with her computer and I have to push her to get up. So, um, I have to say a big thank you for her teachers, both their teachers, honestly. They've been great this year, um, given everything. But I do really think that we need to at least get back to that four day. I think it would be a good balance for everybody there. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Rachel, are you there?
Hi, yes, can you hear?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was under my husband's name on our laptop and it wasn't working. So anyways, my name is-
We're glad you're here now.
My name's Rachel Dale and we live in Mount Pleasant. We actually have four children in Mount Pleasant School in four different buildings. So it has been a very eventful year for us. We have a high schooler, middle schooler, vanter, and bowel. And first of all, I just want to say thank you. I agree with so many people that have commented on here about how well all the teachers, the staff, everyone has done to keep our kids safe. And with a large family, it's very tempting to just try to keep everybody at home because if we think if somebody's going to go out, you know, someone else might get it. But anyways, I just want to say I really, really appreciate how hard you guys are working to keep all of them safe. And the big thing I wanted to say was I feel like for the- And the big thing I wanted to say was I feel like for the middle school and our high school students is that Wednesday, whether if you keep it at a two-day or have the kids go back for four days for high school, I feel like that Wednesday is extremely important for the teachers to have and for the students to have to, to get that break just in the middle of the week. Especially the teachers, I feel like coming from an educational background. They just really need that time to be able to get their mental break and just be able to get things together. So I feel like that's really important. And again, just thank you so much for how hard you're working. All of our kids learn differently. So two of them are online, two of them are in person. And I just really appreciate all that you guys have done.
Thank you very much, Rachel. At this point, I do not have any other community members that have raised their hand to talk. If there is anyone else that would like to make comment, please raise your virtual hand. Eric, are you there?
I sure am. Am I coming through?
Yep, go ahead.
Wonderful. Hi, everybody. My name's Eric Roman. I'm a Mount Pleasant president, Mount Pleasant Support Staff and the Mount Pleasant Support Staff Union President. I just wanted to say thank you again to Superintendent Verleger, Vice Superintendent Linda Boyd, and the rest of the bargaining teams on both sides of our table for having such a great bargaining session to settle our contracts. So a big thank you to them and to the rest of the school board tonight for, for ratifying our contract. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Eric. Cindy, are you there? Cindy, can you hear me?
What the heck's going on?
Okay, all right, can you hear me?
We can now. It's much better. Yep, go ahead.
Sorry about that. My name is Cindy Cool and I've been a resident in Mount Pleasant, business owner for 40 years. And we are experiencing a massive accumulation of adverse childhood experiences with this pandemic. This has increased in depression, visits to the ER for mental illness problems, and this increased suicidal tendencies in our children. Adverse childhood experiences is documented in the CDC website. The adverse experiences with this global pandemic has caused stress, constant fear of death, when our death is actually one-tenth of one percent. And the children are constantly being haunted with this fear. And we have economic crisis that's caused fear in our children. They may, they may lose their home or they may not have food. They're watching our national violence. It's taken away their sense of safety. This lockdown and social distancing is actually isolation. And it has been cruel and has affected the ability for our children to bond. The loss of our schools has caused the loss of our child's daily familiar routine with school. And it has reduced our child's sense of security. We need to open full-time. We have failed to protect our children. They have lost their sense of safety in a stable world. And they are failing in learning, attention, good decision-making, and the ability to respond to stress. This toxic stress has caused actually changes in the brain development. And we need to simplify and return to in-person teaching full-time as soon as possible, considering that the death stats don't support what we are doing. We need to be brave and we need to rip the Band-Aid off. And we need to step forward and open up our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Dana, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Dana Johansson from Mount Pleasant and I have three children in the district, spread out in two schools. And I'd start with thanking you for pivoting throughout the entire pandemic to balance all our student and staff needs. I've been a regular meeting follower. So all the hours you put in, at least publicly, I've put in with you. So I feel you. And I, as a parent, have had to adjust to me, my kids' social, academic, and mental health needs. But I feel that is my role as a parent. That responsibility is not exclusively on your shoulders. And I feel like some people are placing that exclusively on your shoulders. I don't expect you to set aside our children's health concerns simply because they do have some of these other needs that have popped up during the pandemic. I can handle those other needs. But what I can't control is their physical safety at school. Only the board and the teachers can. That's your greatest responsibility. We as a state are already opening up many areas of activity. And I caution against this being another one added to the mix that just opens the floodgates to where we have an all-or-nothing approach rather than taking systematic steps and gradually doing things where it makes sense and seeing how the different factors interplay. I feel like that's what we've consistently done. It has worked for us. Let's not throw aside all of that success just because maybe things aren't the pace to everyone's satisfaction. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Tara, are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tara Leonard. I have three kids at the high school. I live in Mount Pleasant. And all three of them have had different, I guess, experiences with everything that's been going on. My senior, he gets to go to the tech center, so he's doing good. But mentally, he also gets anxious. My junior, he has some issues with school. He's not engaged. He doesn't see the point of what's going on because he said it doesn't, nothing matters. So that's a concern for me and he's my happy-go-lucky guy. So when that starts happening, it's a concern. And then my freshman, she needs more work, more face-to-face, and she's not getting that. So her grades are slipping and then her confidence slips. So although I don't think that it's the school's responsibility for my children's mental well-being, the same as when I go to work, I don't think that it's my boss's responsibility for my mental well-being. I don't really even ever see him. He doesn't work in the same building that I do. However, I know that when I get up and I get in the shower and I brush my teeth and I get out of bed and I go to work and accomplish all that I need to for that day and then I come home, then that makes me feel better mentally. And I think that's the same for the kids. If they just don't have anything to do because they are children, so their main goal right now is school, then that's what is causing the issue with their mental health. Not that it's the teachers that are, you know, doing any type of intervention for their mental well-being. Although I think that also, that you also do that as well. The teachers in the school give a positive environment. So I feel like I see the light at the end of the tunnel with this discussion about four days rather than just two. I have felt like, why are we waiting so long? A lot of the area schools are doing it. And I just really thank you for putting that as an option. I really, really hope that that's what goes through. These kids need it. And I really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. So and again, at this point, I don't have any other community member that has their hand raised. If you would like to provide comment to the board, if you will raise your virtual hand, I can unmute your microphone. So I guess at this point, Amy, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, um, is there, so looking at it next, it looks like the plan for the approval is what we're kind of coming up against. Is there a time then for board members to further discussion about anything that they have? Okay, so if any board member has anything that they want to say pertaining to to get us to closer to making a motion, you know, feel free to do that.
Okay, I, I appreciate everything and I truly appreciate the staff and I truly understand. But, and I know I'm going to give all it down, but I am going to make a motion that we go, I don't mind the cohort models, but I would prefer to go back five days a week. The only exception I would make would be for the kids in the GI Tech because they're dealing with multiple schools and every teacher there is online. That would be the only exception, you know, I see. But I personally would like to make a motion to see everybody go back to five days a week. I would respect the cohort models. So again, you're only going half a day at the middle school, but back to regular at the high school. And yes, that is a motion. So if nobody seconds it, fine, but I need you to make that.
I worry a little bit about the consistency. And I know that each school has, kids have different needs as do parents and teachers. I, I really understand that and respect that. My concern is for our families, especially if there are families with kids in multiple buildings. And I can't imagine what childcare must be like when there are different plans at different buildings. And, and I know our younger kids are those that, that, that the childcare issues are much more daunting. But I think the more consistency we can have, whatever that might be, the more consistency is something we should take into consideration.
So Amy, I believe we have a motion that we need to determine if there's a second for the motion or not and then move on to further discussion. So.
Okay, is there, is there a second to Sheila's motion? And as I understand it, it's going off five days a week at both the middle school, or actually for all of the schools, with the exception of the GI Tech Center, which would remain at four. Not hearing a second. We can open that up to further discussion.
I have a question. Is this something where you would like us to go through each, each group? Since we have several different kind of items that we need to approve, is that the best way to go about this?
I think that's a, that's a great question, Courtney. And maybe sort of like we leaned suggested earlier this evening, maybe we do an elementary approval, a middle school approval, and a secondary approval. And then that might help us keep track of it a little bit better. You know, ultimately, it's, it's your choice, but that might help organize our thoughts a little bit better.
I would agree with that. If everybody else is okay with it, if we kind of start off, I think some of these are going to be easier conversations to have than others. So I think that might make some sense too. So with that being said, if we start at the elementary level, does anybody have anything to add or say about anything with the elementary level or a motion to move with that?
I would motion to approve the elementary as, as they presented it.
I will second that.
Can we have a conversation once it's seconded? So my only concern there is, again, it's safety, right? I think all along I've, I've pushed safety first. I think, I don't, you know, I think none of us want the responsibility of increased risk as much as we can for these children. I feel a lot better than the staff that wanted got options to be vaccinated. And I was so pleased with our district for moving so quickly on this. And so for the elementary school, you know, we're reducing that social distancing and arguably, like I said, not by much. But I feel like every time we're inching, I mean, we're taking, we're increasing the risk. And we know it's worked well so far. We've been, you know, to use Jennifer's word, lucky, I guess, that we haven't had any big outbreaks. And so every time we lowered a little bit, right, we're increasing a little bit that risk factor that we're taking. That being said, I didn't hear tonight any other plan to balance that out. Like if we want these online orders, I want to return to have a place which we said we would honor as best as we could, I don't see any option not to. And just, and, and keep in mind, you know, that we really ask as much as possible that the social distancing remain, whether it's recess, especially if masks are off or lunchtime to minimize risks as much as possible.
I would say the reason I think I'm not quite as worried at that age level is because they are in such a small cohort. I mean, it's actually the rooms staying together. So it's not like they're intermingling with other classes so much. And, you know, that, and plus the age group is very, very low risk. And, you know, if you look at the CDC stats, it's arguing how contagious even these little ones are. More in the K2 than a 3-5.
Yeah. But. And the data isn't super clear on that too. And so there's a lot of conflicting information. So it's hard to say, but so far what we've done has worked, right? That's the data we have, is that what we've been doing for whatever reason is working. And so each time we touched it, right, is that level of discomfort of how much are we increasing the risk? And, you know, emphasizing that we, you know, we want to minimize that as much as we can.
I guess if you look, you know, nationwide, it's people who are back in full-time, five days a week. That data is still showing the same thing. They're not showing an increase nationwide. And if you go even globally, you know, most of the schools are all back in and, and that data is showing the same thing. And we're actually social distancing more and, and doing more than a lot of places are. So that's why I'm comfortable just from the stats and the, and the research that I've been seeing that's been going on, reading the CDC statistics, that kind of thing. This particular age group specifically tends to have a lower risk, tends to not be the super spreaders they thought they were going to be. I mean, that's proving out. They haven't had major spikes in them. So that makes me more comfortable in this particular age group.
I'd have to agree. I think with the Central Michigan Health Department recommendation, the state of Michigan Health, the CDC, our own experience, also our experience in the staffs being able to manage to the population and the cohort structures that are there. I think there are a lot of facts that we've experienced and knowledge that we have that there's a risk in everything that we do, but I think the risk has greatly shrunk, especially compared to six months ago. I think we have so much more knowledge and experience and the data's gotten much clearer to know that with this particular virus, this is still within a safety realm that I think we're going to be safe with.
I would agree with that too. And I think that this does offer the opportunity for any family who is concerned or worried can go. They do have the online option. But for those that really do want to be in the classroom and have asked, it gives the opportunity for every student who wants to be in the classroom and feel safe to do so, an opportunity to do that.
I know we're talking about elementary right now exclusively. However, I think if, as long as there is the option for families to choose to, for Oilers online, I think we need to give the Wednesdays or some day an option. to the teachers because that's a huge, that's a huge stretch for them. That is another prep, if not double that. I think it's really important and I'm all for getting back as, absolutely as much as possible. If we, in a perfect world, I'd say let's go back full time, start to finish. But if we're going to have an option of Oilers online, that extra day is, in my mind, critical.
Just to touch on that a little bit, I'm curious if Kim or Katie can give any feedback. Can they do that right now? Is that fine? About, from my understanding, in our elementary levels, teachers are kind of like either mostly teaching online or mostly teaching face to face. So that Wednesday isn't necessarily as critical as it is for secondary. Is that true?
Correct. So the only blended class that we have are our kindergartners, we mentioned in the slides from earlier. So we have a blended kindergarten at Poen and Gannierd, correct, Kim? So everyone else is either fully, like for my building, for example, we have, I have a third grade teacher who only teaches online here. The rest of my teachers only have face to face students. About 19 to 20 kids in their classroom. I have a solely fourth grade online teacher and then I have two online teachers in my building here for fifth. And McGuire has one just because of the sheer numbers. So we have fully dedicated online and then fully dedicated face to face besides the few kindergarten.
One of the concerns I have, and maybe Katie or Kim, you can help me through that one, is that even though, like I get it, they don't have a blended roster, which I think is really great. They still have often some kids that are quarantining. And so then you end up with like having to, you know, work, obviously, like they have to to give those kids that are in their classrooms, like let's say two kids are quarantining out of one third grade class. They still have to provide the work and work with them. How, is that, is that a big weight on them?
So I don't know about Katie's building, but typically when we've had a quarantine, we, we've had whole classrooms. So the teacher is quarantining with them, so they're providing the work just as if they were here. I would say in any circumstances where it's just a child here or there, that wouldn't be any different than if a student or a family came to us and said, you know, hey, I'm going on a vacation for a week. Are there a few things that we can bring with us? And we would give that to them. So this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be any different in that circumstance. So we would, and and really we've been just leaving it open to the teachers to either do it like they've always done it, as if it were a situation where they were going on a vacation or out for a little while to do hard copies of it, or if they feel like it's easier to put it within Google Classroom because maybe they're already using Google Classroom for any other activities that the other kids are doing in the face to face instruction. If it's just as easy to do that, then of course they can do that. So it's, it's been their choice for the few situations that, that's come up.
Yeah, it would be the same at the third through fifth grade level. So we have the occasional student that might be in quarantine due to a positive, being in close contact. And we would treat it the same way as if a student were out longer term with the flu or a strap or vacationing. We will typically have parents or students take an extra week of vacation here and there with families. So we have really tried to communicate with our, our teachers that we do not expect them to go live or record lessons. I'm sure many of them would do that for their students. They're put in long hours and want to make sure their kids stay up, up to date and up to par with the ongoing academics we have here. But that is not a requirement at all for our teachers for that, so. And there has been some shifting and catching up with students as they've transitioned from even Oilers online to face to face, just with pacing of things or the online platform. We just, all the elementary spent Monday in data meetings, looking at our grade level data and what, what can we do in these next few months of learning to, to best fill in some of those gaps and support our students academically, so.
Thank you. That helps me a lot. I, I'm done in terms of questions for me, so I'm ready to go.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table. I don't know if people feel comfortable voting now.
I'll call the motion.
Okay. All right, so you, so we do have a motion and we have a second. So Courtney, if you want to do roll call, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Right, go ahead, it's a roll call.
Okay, roll call, Courtney.
Can we, well, can we go back to, we, because there's been a lot of discussion. Just to be clear, can we go back to what the motion actually is?
I motion to accept the plan that they presented to us as it was presented.
Thank you.
And Tim seconded it. So Courtney, if you'd like to do roll call.
Dana Cockens.
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk.
Yes.
Willeen Pangle.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond.
Yes. So with the elementary school that passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on to the discussion of the middle school.
And I'm going to make a motion to accept it as was presented to us.
Second that.
Any discussion?
That was me, Deb, Courtney.
Yeah, yeah, my whole problem is still, I mean, I understand the staff needs and I understand that. But we're talking a 20% failure rate here in the first trimester, and I'm sure it probably got worse in the second. And I tend to think that, you know, you guys in the first trimester, when it wasn't working for you, the five days a week, that you've learned a lot and come a long way. I just, I know most of the parents who've been talking to me really want the kids back in five days a week. So, you know, I just, I, I just really think that that would be helpful. Again, consistency across the thing if, if we just went back five days.
I understand what you're saying, Sheila, but I think once we have a commitment to our Oilers online, we have to carry it through. And if it wasn't for that, I think I'd feel much more like you do. But with the online Oilers and, and the fact that those teachers are juggling both, I do think they really need it. And so that's the reason personally why I would be okay, I'm okay keeping it four days a week.
I also think the four days is important. I know Darby highlighted that some teachers are still having to use prep time to stay on top of their Oilers online students and trying to take away a whole day is, I mean, then all their preps, all their lunches, all their evenings, everything will be Oilers online. And I think the failure rate is something to note for sure. But, I mean, there wasn't school for most of the year last year, so there's a, I mean, a clear indication that there's going to be some, some deficits happening.
And I do think that safety should come before academic success, although I am a huge fan of academic success. Don't get me wrong, Nick. That's what we need to do as schools, but right now we do have a priority for safety and this model has worked so incredibly well in the last few months, even when the numbers were pretty high in our community. And so I would like to continue with it.
And that's one of my concerns, had concerns was, because I was definitely leaning toward the five days a week. But I think I heard enough information. I think our rigor can stay high enough that it's going to lower the failure rates because the educators can get the processes down and get that delivered. Where my concern is that, was that 20%, a portion of that 20% failure rate in the middle school and the first try do that, they were going five days a week and educators just couldn't support the whole spread of student. And so some of them fell off the bandwagon. So that's where I'm going to kind of put my hat is that hopefully it's the, they're going to be able to keep the rigor and the connection and bring the students along, so it's going to be more effective than being five days a week. But I, you know, I definitely see where you are, Sheila. I think five days a week, I think should be the consistency model that we should be shooting for. I think we're very close to that. But when there are 200 students in the middle school who are still online, that's a good chunk of kids from all of those sections. And then maybe that would be my only recommendation is, is there other models closer to what the high school is doing with their online component that the middle school could model more? But in general, I think this, having the Wednesday for those cleanup, prep, prep and connections, I think we need to keep that. I think we'll have a sinking ship again if we go five days in the middle school.
Um, I would like to add, I don't think that our students are best served by teachers who are feeling totally overwhelmed and demoralized. So I am very much in favor of keeping the Wednesdays, especially since it sounds like teachers are using that time to make one-on-one connections with the students who are struggling. So I, I feel like that is still a useful point of moving forward. That it, thanks.
Darby, do you know how soon you would have the try to? I'd be, if we're going to go on with this, I'd be very interested to see the test results or the testing for the, you know, after the try to, to see if indeed it's gone down. That would be interesting. Not that that's going to affect today's discussion, but I'm just putting that out there that when you get that info, it would be, um, I'd really like to see it.
I can, I can share it with you.
So there is a motion on the table for the middle school. And it has been seconded. That motion, to my understanding, is due to the four days. And so that would still be a virtual day on Wednesday. It would still be the cohort model, releasing the children at 11:57 and keeping things in place as they are now. And there has been a second. Is there further discussion? Courtney, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Dana Cockens.
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk.
Yes.
Willeen Pangle.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond.
Yes. So the middle school model unanimously passes to keep things as it is. So that moves us to the high school.
I'd like to make a motion to stay with the current option.
So the current option being two days a week, blue, or the blue and gold model, two days a week for each virtual days on Wednesdays and independent learning days, the other two days.
Yep.
Is there a second for Courtney's motion? Okay, not hearing any. If there is another motion or if we'd like to open it up for discussion.
I make the motion, we go to the four day a week as proposed by John.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
And I think I have, I have the same concerns here as I did for the other. I mean, this is the group with the highest risk, right? We're getting closer to that age group, the adult age group. If we can, you know, make sure that the times when there's a higher risk, which is, John, like it was lunchtime, the moving around. And if parents understand the risks that they're taking and they know they have the online orders as a backup option, if they're not okay with the increased risk, because arguably of the three bottles, that's the one where we're increasing the risk the most. Because we are lowering cohort size and we're lowering social distances, both aspects that we cared about back then. And so to me, as long as it's clearly stated and that parents know what they're choosing, it's the group that, from the data seems to be hurting the most from, from the two days a week. And so, I mean, that's, I don't know. I'm not sure we can do much. I, I don't think there's a way to limit cohort and maintain social distance without increasing the risk.
John, um, didn't you say that the social distancing should be still approximately the same?
In the classroom, it'll probably go, right now, we're at just about six foot in most of our classrooms. It, in some of them, it may go to four to five feet. In lunchtime, we think we could still probably maintain the six feet just because of the size of our facility. But in the classroom, we're probably talking about moving down to five in most, four in a few. Some will stay at six, depending on the size of the class.
Okay, thank you. And I agree, options need to be out there and the truth needs to be out there as to exactly what we're doing. And the parents need to, to have that information in, in order to make their choice. Totally agree with that.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I forgot to do that earlier, this is not the first time we've heard in public comments that compliance is not the best at the high school. And so I wonder if we can maybe give some tools to the teachers to increase compliance. Maybe it's like you have one warning, second warning, you're sent to online orders. I don't, I don't know if that's the right answer, but it concerns me. I mean, we've heard that now several times. And I, I don't, I guess I'm not sure, maybe Jeff or John, if you have any feedback on this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in on that. And I would say our compliance isn't where we want it to be. But I would say it's much better than the adults in our community. It's much better than you see out and about in our community and stuff. Our students want to be here. Our students are invested. For, for 99% of the time, when we see students with their mask down, it's a quick reminder and they're happy to comply. Um, even when they hesitate to comply, we quickly remind them that we want to get back to normal. We want sports, we want prom, we want graduation ceremonies. And then they quickly become apologetic and, you know, because they want those things too. So no, our teenagers are not 100% compliant, but like I said, I would bet money they're better than their parents and they're certainly better than I'm seeing in the community. So, yeah, we, we will continue to work on that and we continue to compare strategies, but, but just because we occasionally see a student with a mask off doesn't mean it's, you know, the Wild West. It's actually much better than you would see out and about in the community.
I will also say that even if it isn't happening, our numbers are still low. So, you know, obviously it's not, I mean, they're obviously doing something right, because even if they weren't compliant and our numbers are still low, that says something there.
Yeah, I agree, but we're about to increase risks. So anything, I would be in favor, but thank you, Jeff, for the answer. I'm, I'm, I understand that it's not going to be perfect. I just want to make sure that the teachers have tools that, you know, we try everything we can.
One of the key points of our committee was to relook at that and have a compliance that if a student, you know, one time, you know, we're going to remind them, and so on, a second time, it might mean a call home. And we might have to have a thing where if they can't continue to, you know, comply with it, maybe they have, you know, that the Oilers online is the option for them. And so we understand that we're increasing the risk. We're going to also have to increase the compliance.
Thank you.
I would like to, um, I just am, my biggest concern is bringing back and mixing up all of these students at the high school. I think that where you're at right now with the current model is the best way to ensure decent social distancing, ensure decent masking. And I think adding longer days, more days, more kids, I just, I feel like all it's going to be is ping pong, back and forth, quarantine, waiting it out, quarantine, waiting it out, and I, I can't get behind that. I think that the contact tracing is going to be a nightmare.
Well, and Courtney, I think, I mean, I, I guess what I'm going to say is, you know, we can try it. And, and if it, you know, I think if the parents understand the risk of situation and that quarantining groups are going to increase and they prefer that to the stability of two days a week or the stability of the online. Stability of two days a week or the stability of the online orders, then we putting the choice in the family's hands. And I, I mean, I'm thinking if, you know, John and Jeff, as you presented these models. That a lot of thoughts went into this, I'm sure. And I don't know, I don't have anything else.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table to go four days a week with Wednesday virtual. It has been seconded. Is there any more further discussion on that? Okay, Courtney, roll call vote.
Dana Cockens.
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk.
Yes.
Willie Pengel.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, no. Amy Bond.
Yes. Okay, so that passes and the high school will have the four days a week. Okay, so then we need to do the technical center next, I believe.
I would move to accept. Their proposal as presented.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? A roll call vote.
Dana Cockens.
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk.
Yes.
Willie Pengel.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond.
Yes. If that unanimously passes. Do we need to do the, anything with the alternative? The GRSC program, anything like that, John?
I don't think we need to vote on anything for athletics, but if you wanted to vote on the. Community education programs as a whole, I think that would be probably appropriate.
Okay, so then let's do that. The community education programs as a whole, if anybody has a motion or a discussion.
I'm going to accept that they continue on as they have been.
I second that.
All right, is there any need for further discussion?
Deb, that was Sheila and Willie.
Sorry.
You can tell, Willie. I'll have to get an accent.
I don't know, it gets annoying after a while.
Okay, roll call vote.
Dana Cockens.
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan.
Jessica, you turned yours off. You muted you. Yeah.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk.
Yes.
Willie Pengel.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond.
Yes. Okay, so that unanimously passes. I believe then that that is everything we needed to vote on tonight. Okay.
Yes.
Do we need to open it back up for community? For anything that is the community would like to address the board on.
Yeah, I would say this is our second opportunity for public comment this evening regarding any agenda or non agenda item. And that my screen just says Galaxy S ten. Are you there?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, if you could please introduce yourself to the board, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Emily and I am a Mount Pleasant resident. I have two children in the Mount Pleasant School System. And it's come to my attention that the political influences and biases involved in my child's education. My, I believe there is no room for classroom politics. I, my children in history class. Such as my daughter should be learning history, not the teacher's political opinion. This has been. Pushed on these kids basically every single day. Teachers are aware of this. They, students have expressed their concerns. With other teachers. They say, I can't believe he's saying this. You know, children can research and figure out what they think is right and what they believe on their own. They don't need. A teacher giving their own personal opinions and bashing people, calling them names. You know, telling, I mean, they shouldn't even know his political stance, in my opinion, but they all know that he's a proud Democrat. And our children do not need to be gaslated every day at school with political opinions of our teachers. They should be teaching them what has and is happening, current events in the world. I do not agree. That the children should be taught the opinions of their teachers. And. How I would want to know how the school board would want to address the politics and biases in our classrooms and their curriculum. And the teachers' personal views. And I thank you for your time and would like to, would like my question addressed by the next board meeting and included on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the community that would like to comment on any agenda or non agenda item? There aren't any other hands raised at this time, Amy. Thank you.
Okay, so that opens up to the Board of Education discussion. If anybody has anything they'd like to talk about.
Yeah, I'm just talking this time. I just want to say thank you to everyone who. Gave us little gifts for the board. I didn't get thank yous out to everybody and I wanted to say thank you for the appreciation. It was very, very nice. I wanted to commend the board. I thought this was a wonderful meeting, great discussion. I love the way we all listen and, you know, it's, it's awesome. And I also want to tell the staff and the administration, you guys are doing. A phenomenal job and you are appreciated. Thank you.
I'll second that.
I would agree with that too, absolutely. It was, I think we all felt very appreciated with all the gifts that came. For the board and the kind words, the little videos that were made by the different schools. And I think it just also solidifies what a wonderful district we are a part of. And I think I agree, I think tonight showed that you don't necessarily have to agree on anything to have a very productive meeting. And a grouping of of people can come together with all different views, have a wonderful discussion and come to conclusions as well. Is there anything else anybody else would like to to mention or talk about?
I'm just amazed it's not even ten o'clock yet.
Yes. Okay, any, anything else? All right, then we are going to end before ten o'clock. So with that being said, I would like to say that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.